Okay, good evening. We'll call this a regular board meeting for Wednesday, October 26, 2022, to order at 5:36 PM. Thank you all for joining us this evening. I see some students out there and it must be Halloween time too. I see some costumes maybe, so it's always good to see students up here. Roll call please, Marcella.
Dr. Bankus.
Director Bankus is out of town on an excused absence. Director Jorgensen is out of town on an excused absence. Both of them are in a location where they cannot have internet access.
Director Daniels.
Present.
Director Loma.
Here.
Director Malpakum.
Here.
Director Nelson.
Here.
Director Ott.
Here.
So we have a quorum. We have five directors attending in person and Director Bankus and Director Jorgensen are excused. Please join the board in a moment of silence. Thank you. Treasurer Nelson, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the agenda as amended by removing items D1, Contract Awards, and D2 Budget Transfers, Appropriations, and FTE Approvals, as there are no contract awards or budget transfers appropriations and FTE approvals.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Marcella, roll call please.
Director Daniels.
Aye.
Director Loma.
Aye.
Director Malpakum.
Aye.
Director Nelson.
Aye.
Director Ott.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The agenda has been adopted. So for today, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. We are going to be led by the Madison Elementary Drama Team. So I invite the Madison Elementary Drama Team. I think four or five students are up here. Can you all please come up here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you for correcting me Superintendent Gall. So I have here, the Madison Principal is also going to give the, you know, Pledge of Allegiance. So I got confused between the Madison Principal and the Madison, the North Students. It's the North Students who are up here, the Drama Team, North Vikings. So, thank you guys. You guys did amazing. Now we come to Madison Elementary. The school spotlight is Madison Elementary and we have Principal Darian Latimer here.
Yeah, as Darian comes to the microphone, I just wanted to take a brief moment to celebrate all the hard work that Darian and his team are doing over at Madison. I've had the good fortune of being there to both celebrate and to work on some challenges that we've had with some of our community, but I have never felt a more welcoming school with deep levels of understanding of the needs of their community and their students. And I've never seen more pizzas stacked on one set of tables in my entire life. And so I think he's got a secondary job, which is, he owns a local franchise of Domino's maybe, but Darian the floor is yours.
Thank you. And North, you did a great job. I've got ties to North, so that works. And I think it was appropriate that it said "School Spotlight" is King Elementary, as my kids went to King. And Ms. Johnson, Principal Johnson and I are very competitive. She sends her son and her money to the University of Oregon, so go Ducks. And I just wanted that to be on the record, so. Thank you very much for your time. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I've had the privilege of being the principal at Madison Elementary for the past seven years. In those seven years, Madison has been a performance school, all but, all but one. And that, you know, that was a very challenging year, but we learned a lot about ourselves. We learned a lot about our students and have been, been performance ever since. This is Madison's mission statement that has, that has been in place the entire time I've been there, and I think it's appropriate. Our staff spent a lot of time putting this together, but it says, "Inspiring innovative thinkers and resilient problem solvers who are passionate and collaborative in their learning." A couple of things that just really resonate with me is this idea of being passionate about learning. I come from, I come from a middle school background before I came to elementary, and one of the things that I was always curious about was, you know, what went on in elementary school that made the students the way that they were, good, bad, ugly, when they came to middle school? And so the thing that we've talked about at Madison is that when, when our students leave Madison Elementary, even if they haven't quite got to where they need to be as readers or as mathematicians, that they have a love for learning, because there's so much that happens when they leave elementary school. There's so many things that they get into and learn about themselves. So we really want students to have a love for learning and the people that help them learn, whether that's a teacher, a coach, a youth pastor. We want them to be passionate about the people who, who, who help them learn. So this is very near and dear to all of our hearts at Madison. One thing that I really want to celebrate, hopefully this comes up here, is we are really, really proud of the growth that our students made in ELA last year. As you see, 74 is median growth percentile is, is, is quite amazing. You know, to go from being 37 one year to having top 5% growth in the state of Colorado is something that we're very, very proud of. And unfortunately, the teachers that really helped with that are doing parent-teacher conferences right now. So I'm going to try to speak on, on their behalf a little bit and let you know what they would say. Before that, I want to show you just a little bit of our subgroup data. And again, across all subgroups, you see the, the growth in the, you know, from the low 80s to the high 80s. And I think that's indicative of our philosophy that, you know what, we take every kid, no matter where they come from, what they look like, and we, and we meet their needs. We, we identify their needs and we meet their needs. And so we wanted you to see that, you know, we are making progress across all subgroups. Sorry, that's the same one. I want to get to show you a couple of things that we focused on, on our, on our one plan that I think are some of the reasons why you see this data. Really, we, we believe that we needed, and this is, this is from our one plan from the previous year that we think led to this growth, really just focusing on good process and procedures. We, we may, we believe that the biggest bang for our buck was going to be to focus on our small group instruction, and that's what we decided last year. So one of the first things we had to decide is, are there, were there good procedures for small group instruction? And it's as simple as this. Did kids know where to go when the, when we ring the bell? Did they know how to transition across the room so the transition is, is efficient and get to where they need to be so we can get to the learning? So, sounds simple, but we spent time talking about those processes and procedures for small group instruction. Really utilized our, our district personnel. Kristi Feldman played a big role in coming and talking to our staff about small group instruction and how to monitor that. We developed as a staff a small group walkthrough form so that myself, my team could go in and, and document whether we were seeing the things that we wanted to see as far as small group instruction went. And again, it goes back to that idea when I showed you the subgroup data of really just identifying the literacy needs of every student and making sure that in that small group time, because again, we thought in those groups of six, that was the best place for us to, you know, to meet that need. Whole group instruction was still a focus. It's important, but we thought, hey, when I'm sitting with you and there's just six of you, six of you up here, that's interesting, you know, I can really target, target your needs. So that was our focus for last year. And I think the other thing that, that our teachers would say if they were here, this group of students was fortunate to have teachers that really raised the bar and had high standards. And you know, the hard thing about raising the bar is actually holding the bar up. That's, that's the hard part. You have to hold, hold it up and sometimes your arms get tired when you raise the bar. But I think we had teachers that refused to lower the bar. And it's hard when a student struggles for the 10th time. You know, you, you may have the tendency to go, ah, this is where they're at, but these teachers refused to, to lower the bar. The other thing I believe that was, was truly important is, is we believe that feedback has to happen as quickly as, as possible. Go back to my days as, as a football coach, when I'm coaching running backs and they make a mistake, I don't wait till after practice. I don't wait till the next day. I correct the mistake right there. We, we have a saying at Madison that we want students to live in the misconception for as little time as possible, because if they live there as little time as possible, then, then we just have a better chance of, of getting them where they need to be. So I believe that that's what those teachers would talk about happened last year, that, that there was a very high standard. There was some stamina with that standard from our teachers and that, and that there was, there was really immediate feedback. Couple of things, and I know I have, have a short time, that I just wanted to point out about our, our, you know, our Madison School. We, Madison is up 50 students this year, so thank you to all of you who had a role in giving us some additional resources. I believe that comes from just the parent involvement that we have. We've had strong parent involvement and we allow our parents to be a part of major decisions from what programs we're going to keep or what programs they value. You know, we, we really focused on some social media this year. I'm not the biggest social media guy, but fortunately I have a few people that are, and, and we did that. Just some partnerships through Sunnyside Church and tutoring, Calvary Family, Family Martial Arts and Fitness with Isaac Costley and those folks. I have, I would be remiss if I didn't say something about those folks and just a strong So that was really all I have. I wanted to say thank you. Do you have any questions? Because we've got some, we, we really focused on what we did last year, but we've got some really cool things going on now, if anybody wants to know. I'll be more than happy to talk about that. Shall I? So obviously, we, we really celebrated our, our literacy growth, but we, you know, we looked at our math growth as well, and it wasn't, it wasn't where we wanted it to be. So we are, we are all in, in math this year, and one, the vehicle that we're using right now is, is our PLCs. And one of the things we are doing as, as a staff this year is that we are looking at all the information that we gather and trying to analyze as much of that as possible. What I mean by that is sometimes, well, traditionally at Madison, we took our Common Formative Assessments, and that was the data that we use to make decisions about instruction. The only problem with that is those happened every 10 days or every two weeks. So it's a good process. You do a Common Formative Assessment, you get together, collaborate, we make some decisions. But we thought, man, our kids are, are engaging in 10, 12, 15 tasks a day. Like, why are we not using that information and analyzing it in the same way that we did our Common Formative Assessments? Well, you might say, well, gosh, how can you analyze, you know, all the exit tickets that you do in a day and all the tasks that you do in a, in a day? And, and sure, we're not, we're not there 100%, but we've really looked at, at making that process more nimble and more, and smaller so that we can take an exit ticket or a worksheet that a student does or a writing task and analyze it in the same way that we would have done a Common Formative Assessment. And what we are doing is we are trying to gather information daily, every day, look at that and, and, and see what does that tell us about our students? And so instead of adjusting and shifting and making right and left turns every 10 days, you know, the idea now is to do it daily. And, you know, I think our PLCs have been excellent. I, I actually would invite any of you to come. That, that is our, our spotlight right now, the PLC work that we're doing each Tuesday. Come anytime during Tuesday, they run all day. I would love for you to see what our teachers are doing in professional learning communities. They are coming with daily tasks. They are analyzing it. And what we're starting to see now, after we've modeled it for a few weeks, is now they're doing the tasks without, you know, having to bring them to me. It's happening daily now. It was happening once a week, just so I could see in PLCs, but they're doing it daily. And we are, we are beginning to see the progress that we want to see. So I'm very, very excited about that. Again, I would invite you out anytime to come and see what we're doing in professional learning communities. So that's my rah rah for Madison. It's a great place. If you haven't been out, please come and, come and see it. Come and see it.
So I just, I love your urgency and I love your micro solutions, so we're going to coin a new term of being micro urgent. And so you're really demonstrating these short cycles in these small groups with great intentionality, and you're allowing the data to inform with your own instinct of the, what it takes of having been an experienced leader to understand the needs of both your community and your staff. And so hats off to you and the entire Madison team.
Thank you. Thank you.
So thank you. I'll look to the board for some questions, so I want to provide some context to the community too. You alluded in the beginning, King Elementary and Madison Elementary. So in the board agenda, it says King Elementary, so in the feedback that I gave the superintendent last week when I was looking at the agenda, I mentioned to him that King Elementary had just been here in February, and in the transition from the old administration now to the new administration, that was lost. So I was stating, we just heard from King Elementary a few months back, we have 45 other schools or whatever we haven't heard from, so I'm glad that you could step in in the last minute and, and come and share some of the good.
What a great problem to have that I'm stacking up school spotlights.
Right, exactly.
It's my pleasure.
And, yeah, I mean, you wear multiple hats out there. I know that you were a principal and I knew you were a chef. I didn't know you were a football coach too, Nelson.
Long, long time ago when I was a teacher. Long time ago.
Okay.
Long time ago.
Director Nelson.
I just wanted to ask you to share a little bit more about programs at Madison, what makes the school unique? I mean, this is also an opportunity for the community to hear more about your school and if parents are thinking about why they should come to your school.
So one of the things Madison was, I know everybody has shifted to kind of an extended time this year. So Madison actually was the pioneer in extended days. So we've been, so when everybody got the additional time, it was, you know, it was no sweat off our, our back. We've, we've been doing that and, and, you know, we may even push you guys for some more time in the future, because it was something that made us stand out. But one of the things that I, I have to say first is Madison has an incredible STEAM program. All of our, all of our students get a half a year of STEAM. They switch, they go a week at a time. It is, it is in our specials rotation, run by Mr. Shane Mulligan, who is just an outstanding teacher, and he would never say it, so he's going to be upset that I bragged on him. But just, you know, the inquiry, the critical thinking, the project-based learning that happens at Madison is just outstanding. So that is something we're in the R and D process right now to, to do even more STEAM at Madison. So I think, again, other than our PLCs, if you want to see outstanding, just science, technology, engineering, you know, the design process, math, please come and spend some time in our STEAM program. So our, our students get, get four specials, so they also take art, they also take music and, and physical education as well. But, you know, I think the beacon is, is our STEAM program at Madison.
Thank you for answering. That's what I was hoping you would share.
Thank you.
My son enjoyed playing with your robots at the Gary Berry Stadium.
Yes.
So I knew there was more to your school.
Thank you.
Thanks for.
Thank you.
And I'm glad that you are continuing the STEAM program. I know that you applied for that pathway and you weren't selected, but the teachers out there haven't given up and they are.
You have to remind me of that.
I clearly remember Ms. Kalback saying, you will get a slice of the pie, so hopefully you are getting a slice of the pie and you can do what you are doing, so. Director Loma.
You know, I was wondering, I'm a proponent for increasing language arts. And I said, I'll tell you why. I was involved in a school that was underperforming, we jumped two levels to performance. And what we had our teachers do, second grade, is double up the English. And over two years after we doubled up the English on second grade, everything kind of vaulted itself. And I know we have a hard time making those type of changes because of our system, the world we're in. What are your thoughts? You're there, and if hypothetically, if you were able to double up your English for your second grade, even maybe first second, I mean, focus, I mean, jack it up, double it, and then, and then let everything else remain the same, what, what do you think could happen?
I think that anything you put more time and effort into is, is going to increase. That's why I jokingly said that we're going to bug you guys for some more time.
Yeah.
At some point, because we, we will take it. Our teachers want it. You know, what, what we do now to try to get as much as we can, because I do, I do agree with your point that, you know, the more time we could have in anything, math, language arts, I think, I think we would certainly be more successful. Right now, what, what we try to do, every kid gets their, you know, their, their wonders time, their literacy time. We have something that we call a P O B block, which is where students get some additional literacy time in the morning, they get some additional math time in the afternoon, kind of at their level. You know, our kids that are really excelling get to, you know, get to be enriched, extended. You know, our ELL students will get some, you know, some targeted ELL literacy instruction during that time. We run some small groups. So we try to, you know, we, we try to game the system a little bit, game the master schedule a little bit.
Right.
To get some more time in both in math and literacy. And, and this year, our, our big one plan deal this year was to add some specific time in our schedule to math. Again, we, we love the growth that we saw in literacy and we want that to maintain, but we just, we didn't see it in math and, and the data was very obvious. So I agree, time is, time is money.
And I, I found that when you, we focused on language arts, the math scores raised, because if you can't read a problem, you're just, you're just not going to be able to process it.
Yeah. Absolutely. Very, very common problem, sitting through some conferences and the, you know, today and yesterday, you do hear about when we get to word problems, what happens with, with students.
Just falls down, yeah.
So I, I agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Director Daniels.
Hi. I don't really have a question as much as I have an acknowledgement. Of course, Madison, I'm partial to Madison and all of the hard work that I have witnessed, the teachers, the staff, the PTA, along with arts and STEAM and working really hard. And I appreciate you sharing that with the rest of the community. You have to tell everybody hi for me.
Yes.
And it's just a pleasure to see Superintendent Gall bringing forth our wonderful programs and thank you for coming in at the last minute. I appreciate that.
No problem. And I just want to echo, you're right. I have an amazing staff. These presentations are easy with me because I, for me, because I just have to tell the truth about what they do. I just have to watch them and I get to come and tell you. People ask me, am I nervous of talking in front of the board? Well, I just, I'm just telling you what I see every day from the Madison staff. And yes, we've all been through, you know, craziness and changes. And yeah, they, they get at me every once in a while, but, but they are focused on students. They're an amazing staff and they, they, they make my job easy, so.
I agree. And I have to also give props to the front office staff as well. Every time you walk in, they make you feel welcome, they make you feel like you're being heard and they get you where you have to go. And I'm, I'm always, always appreciative of walking in and feeling like I belong. And I'm an adult and it's not built for me. It's built for children, students, and as scholars, you know, and, and your students are amazing.
Thank you.
You, I really just appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you for the hard work.
We appreciate what, what you all do as well. Thank you for supporting us.
Any other comments? I don't see any more. So I'm going to make a couple of comments to you and just provide some feedback to you. I've known you for a long time and I'm glad that you came and shared with us a brief history of Madison, you know, how you had a down year and how you guys came together and since then you've been performance. And that's a great story to hear and also how you target every student that is coming into your school and when you broke it up by subgroups, each of your subgroup is growing and you meet every student where they are in their K-12 educational journey and provide them the support and resources to me. That to me is equity, okay? And you guys are doing it amazingly well and I appreciate what you guys are doing out there. One other feedback I want to give you, this came up when our budget conversations came up, that you guys need Kiss and Go, that lane to be remodeled or whatever it is.
Yes.
So that's in the hopper, it's going to still get done through facilities, so it is being prioritized.
Thank you.
So hopefully next year you should have that, even though it didn't come through the fund balance or S R money, it is being prioritized.
Thank you very much.
And I also saw that you are losing your music teacher in the personnel report. You've got a replacement out there, because she was amazing out there.
Yeah, yeah, but you know what? I, I, congratulations to her. I think it's a, it's a good move for her to, to focus on. She's an amazing choir teacher and Russell's got a good, got a good one.
I mean, every time she takes the students, your students to the Rockies game to sing the national anthem, so somebody else had to take that mantle on now, so.
I'm working on it.
Yeah. Another hat that you can wear.
Yes.
So thank you. Thank you for coming up and I think Superintendent Gall has something for you too, so.
Just to coin my appreciation, thanks for your leadership. I can see me back at school, so let's get back to those parents.
Yes. Conferences.
Yeah. Yeah, hopefully our teachers are being taken care of. Maybe they've got a hot meal or something out there today.
Yes, absolutely.
You're the sheriff, so you should be able to provide.
Guys, have a good evening. Thank you for letting us.
Okay, public comments, moving on to. So most of you know the board protocol by now. Each of you, for public comments I meant, each of you have three minutes for your comment. Keep an eye on the clock so you can complete your comments in the allotted time. Please be respectful of our speakers and maintain the expected order and decorum in the boardroom. Communicate your thoughts in a professional manner. If you want to show support or solidarity to a speaker, please stand as the speaker is talking or use a silent applause. And lastly, the statements made by the public do not reflect the views of the board or the district. With that, the first item is a non-action item.
Good evening, board. Superintendent. As the board contemplates the charge of the policy committee discussed in last week's work session, the authoritarian ambitions of one director demand public consideration. Are we a policy-driven district or a board governance district? Director Loma goes on, "The policy becomes the law and we shackle ourselves with shackles that are not even real, as if following the rules is a problem for governance. The preposterous suggestion that election to office elevates a public servant above the rules of operation would be comical if it weren't so chillingly laughable. Laws don't serve leaders unless they're trying to be overlords. Laws are guardrails. In the politics, Aristotle said, 'It is more proper that law should govern than any one of the citizens. On the same principle, if it is advantageous to place the power in some particular persons, they should be appointed to be only guardians and the servants of the laws. In democracies where the laws are not supreme, demagogues spring up. In 1776, John Adams wrote, 'The very definition of a republic is an empire of laws and not of men.' Board directors don't ascend a throne upon election. They don't shed accountability to codes of behavior or rules that identify process. Director Loma moans about amendments overriding the Constitution. So more pesky rules and processes to get in the way of whims and raw power? One would hope he doesn't begrudge the 13th Amendment ending slavery. Maybe it's just picking the rules you like. In a legislature or on a board, the failure to observe governing principles saddles us not with directors but dictators who grant themselves free rein to indulge their imperious urges. Whether that's Director Jorgensen's weekly board meeting badmouthing and malignant insinuations that veteran teachers, his own employees, are irresponsible and lazy evaluation cheats, makes you wonder what his teachers. makes you wonder what his teaching experience was like, or Director, Director Loma's spouting unfounded hogwash and vulgarities from the dais. No wonder they persist in attacking the master agreement, which requires transparency and due process to assure accountability to the mission of educating our students and to the observance of the workplace rights of the professionals dedicated to that mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Amanda Gaden.
Okay, so first off, I want to thank you guys for letting us be here tonight and having a chance to speak to you. Uh, my name is Amanda Gaden. I am the new performing arts teacher over across the street at North Middle School. Go Vikings, indeed. Um, you may or may not know that the drama program at North is relatively new. Um, we got started about, really got into the swing of it about mid-spring last year. Um, and it is absolutely thriving. I'm teaching twelve classes, uh, drama classes as part of our I B program. We are a C T E program, uh, which we are the only middle school drama program in the district to be that. Um, we also have a brilliant and amazing drama club. Those are my kids. I love them. Um, we did a great spring show, um, and it was an incredible success. I was blown away at the talent that we have at North, just completely gobsmacked. Uh, so I was very excited for our fall production. We held auditions right after school started. I had fifty-five kids show up to audition for thirty parts. I wish you could have been in the room to feel the energy. Um, and we are now underway in rehearsals for that. We have sixty kids at this point between techies. Uh, that is ten percent of the students of, of North Middle School. Um, and I don't wanna spoil anything for you. I've given you information on what the play is about. It's called Homeschooled. Uh, it's a comedy by Jason Pizzarello. It's about a town that spends its entire education budget on a cheese festival. So they gotta get the parents to come in and teach. And as we all learned during the pandemic, parents aren't always very good teachers. So hilarity ensues. There's great characters. It's a lot of fun. I don't wanna spoil it for you. What I wanna do is invite you personally to come see these brilliant kids do their amazing, amazing magic. Um, they have worked so hard. They have such incredible dedication. As I said, we had an hour and a half rehearsal. Uh, we were practicing some stage makeup. Um, so they have worked. They know what they're doing. Uh, they are going to represent not just North Middle School, but D eleven brilliantly. And I know this board and the superintendent like to be in the schools to see what's happening. Um, and so I hope that you will come. Um, the information's on there. It's November ninth and November tenth, two weeks from today. It's at six P M. We would be honored to have you see it. So we like to call ourselves the drama, the good kind. Um, so we would invite you to come experience the drama. Um, and with that, I would like to turn it over. I believe my students are listed, okay? This is my first board meeting, so forgive me.
I'm going to call out your students.
Okay, great. They are gonna come up, um, and talk a little bit about why all this matters so much.
Okay. So now we have Sa, Sonia Phillips, Josie Sepiti, Tyler Peak, Madison Pakan. Uh, maybe I got your names wrong. If I introduce yourself, come up here. And since you're coming as a group, you guys have a collective five minutes to talk, so.
So who's ready to jazzercise?
Oh, honey, nobody jazzercise this anymore, but Grandma has something to tell you.
No, how about instead, instead, we let them listen to someone with multiple advanced degrees who is more than qualified to teach. Oh, can we just get back to the drama?
Or maybe you guys could just get back to being middle school instead of characters, huh? Let's leave the play away for a minute.
Hello, everyone. My name is Josie Sepiti. I'm an eighth grader at North Middle School and I play the part of Debbie. Some things that I love about drama is the community, community and the strong relationships it builds between actors, which make the character relationships stronger in a stage environment. I love being on stage and having the experiments, experiences that drama provides for everyone. I love everything about the drama club play, but mostly I like the comedy that is entailed with our performance. We would like to share with everyone how much this project means to us and how much we enjoy doing theater. It would mean so much for us if you guys would come and be a part of that.
Hi, I'm Tyler. Um, I am in seventh grade and I play the part of the grandma in the play. And so, um, one, a few things I really like about drama is the people because there's so many different stories that you learn about different people. And anyway, um, I also like being on stage because you can be someone you're not. My favorite part about the play is it's really funny and it's like very relatable because we've all been through like teachers being parents. Um, I would love seeing your faces in the crowd at our play. Thank you.
My name's Sonia Phillips. I'm in eighth grade. My role in the play is Dr. Ned Needlebauer. Um, I really love drama club mainly, like other people have said, I really love all the people. Everyone's so nice and amazing. And I also, I just absolutely love acting. It's really fun. Also, Ms. Gaden, she's the best. Um, but yeah, I think I also really love the play 'cause it's funny. It's like there's, it's, it's just, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's really funny. It's really fun to, to be in it. And I think it would be amazing if you, if I, if we would see any of you at the play.
Okay, I'm Madison Pashon. I'm in sixth grade. I am drama kid number one. And, um, my favorite thing about drama cli, club is definitely the people as well. And then I love like, um, our surroundings, if that makes sense, like where we are, the people, and then definitely the teacher. Um, and then, yeah, we would love to see you there.
Thank you. That was awesome. Well, uh, that, I'm not supposed to, usually board members don't respond back, but thank you for being here. Um, I can say that unfortunately on November ninth, we will be here at a board meeting unless, like what Superintendent Gall said, we move the board meeting to North. But November tenth, all bets are off. I'm sure everybody can come and attend, so, so thank you again. Mr. Michael Till.
Hello, Board. Uh, thanks for having me. I'm a father in D eleven. And, uh, I guess I, I'm just kinda here to speak for what I think is like a big silent majority out there. I've got four kids. I cannot make these meetings at all. Uh, my wife's like, got them all. One was sick with the flu. But I just wanted to come by and, uh, just say like, I'm one of those like thousands of voters that asked you guys, like voted you guys in. And, um, and yeah, I just wanted to where, like, share a simple word of encouragement, you know? Um, yeah, since the pandemic, it was a really hard time and, uh, uh, we, we started homeschooling during that time. Now my kids are getting into grade school age. I'm kind of dialoguing with my wife about getting them back into the public schools. I'm a product, product of public schools and, uh, and I love our, our community here. And we just wanna know that those schools are like safe places that are like focused on academics and like free from divisive ideologies. I know there's lots of input and lots of ideologies out there, but there is a big, big tent of things that we all really agree on and the common space that we converge on. And I just appreciate when you guys are working in that space to, to really get the academic stuff. It's really encouraging to hear from the, the Madison principal, how, um, enrollment's coming up. And, uh, just a few things that were on my mind to share is just, you know, I wanna encourage you guys to continue to make policies that are reasonable, even with, when you're faced with very emotional resistance, right? Like stick to your gut, like trust your gut on those things. Um, and, uh, you know, when people accuse you or sling arrows and accuse you of things, you know, prejudices you don't harbor or like, you know, uh, I don't know, just they, uh, my line, your intent, I guess. Um, just remember the clear thinking that got you to the point that you've been at. Cause we're, we're all out there, this big silent majority. We're gonna vote again. Uh, we believe in those reasonable, uh, like policies that you're, you're bringing us to. And we just need that kind of bold leadership now, um, so like undo much of the like entrenched, entrenched damage in our schools from the pandemic and some past things, uh, just to set us on that simple course, uh, where like a focus on academics and developing responsible citizens, like that's what our public schools are there for. Uh, so thank you for like keeping us on budget and doing that, that, uh, thankless work. Thank you for focusing like on academics, putting the kids first. Um, thank you Superintendent Gall for moving here and, and serving, uh, for your visibility and positivity. I've worked in government too, in the Army Reserve, and I just know that like leadership, when you're doing what's, what people don't like, you'll hear about it quite well. When you're doing what ought to be done, sometimes there's just silence and no thank yous. So, um, like I said, it was kinda hard for me to get here tonight, but I just, I wanted to strain that just because there's so many of us who believe in you guys and believe in the work you're doing. But we are a silent majority, uh, because we're busy working and raising our kids. And, uh, just don't forget us when you're, when you're working through all the politics and you got the activists here speaking in your ears. So, um, that's about it. Just here to say thank you and keep going, keep up the good work and working together. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Ms. Tanya Regan.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Regan. I'm a D eleven taxpayer, a concerned citizen, and I've been attending meetings as I can over the last year. And I sincerely wanna thank the board members for all that you've done in getting the school district moving in the right direction. I know that you're working hard for the students, all of those students. He did a stellar job hiring a new superintendent who knows how to run a school district and has already shown his intent on really improving and making the metrics about reading, writing and arithmetic basics for all the kids. Um, I've noticed how the board meetings are getting much more oriented toward academic improvement, which is huge for me. You know, being an Air Force Academy graduate, you don't get to get in unless you like show math and reading competency. And the schools really, that's where you learn, you know, the basics for everything. When kids are literate in reading and math, they can contribute to societies in so many ways. They have a better life and we all benefit from it. I know many of you have been attacked and, uh, by people who care more about personal disagreements, conflicts and political agendas, and they care about the welfare and the concern of the students. Please don't let those political agendas get in your way of what you know is right and doing the right thing. Um, I know teachers unions has bullied and discouraged you. Um, teachers unions largely have ran unchecked. And so, you know, for them, it's a new experience to actually have someone to stand up. But you're standing in the gap and just like the doctrine of the lesser magistrates, you're leading the way and you're making a difference. And I really wanna thank you for doing that for the kids and grandkids. Um, you were voted in by a really large majority. And if you continue to stand strong against bullies and self-serving agendas, you will be voted in again. And don't forget that it's the agenda. The teachers union has nothing to do with what's best for the kids. It's up to you. It's up to us. And it's up to all the people, we the people that really care about our kids and we know best what's for kids. You were elected to oversee this district and not just to rep stamp everything that's put before you. It's obvious to us in the community that your questions are annoying upper administration to some degree. Maybe they haven't had to answer those tough questions in the past, but keep it up, keep them on their toes and keep up those hard discerning questions. I know particularly Lauren, I've heard you ask a lot of them. Really applaud your tireless and dedicated efforts. And I just really wanna thank you cause it's so important, cause our kids are our, our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cheryl Sailor.
Good evening, board members and community members. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to once again come together to find ways to provide a better academic education for our D eleven children. We are grateful for the opportunity to speak freely and for our wonderful board members who take the time to listen and consider our opinions. Keep us focused, focused this evening on your will in doing what is best for our children. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I'm Cheryl Sailor with D eleven Achievement Alliance. So we've heard the phrase, "See something, say something." However, many teachers in D eleven apparently do not feel safe saying something for fear of retribution. For that reason, today I'm sharing a teacher's experience at Coronado High School's professional development training two days ago. The District Eleven Counseling Department, with the full support of the Coronado Principal, put on a gender identity awareness, uh, teacher training program. This teacher attended the training and found it to be very concerning. Here are just two of the many disturbing things discussed in this teacher training. One, the school staff was told that they are quote, "Not legally required to notify parents of a child's desire to change their name." The counselor will change the preferred name in schoology and power school and not notify parents, end quote. Number two, a link in the training recommends the Trevor Project as a support for kids. When you go to the Pre, Trevor Project link, it has a quick exit button to get out of the site and leave no trail. Why would the Trevor Project need a quick exit button? Why would District Eleven Counseling Department be promoting this website? What kind of people promote secrecy between kids and their parents? Why is District Eleven promoting secrecy and, oh, by the way, not transparency, which we just a few minutes ago heard earlier, um, is required by the master agreement, transparency? So why is Counseling Department telling teachers to keep secrets from parents? Doesn't this violate board policy that delineates the role of parents and guardians, excuse me, and the role of the district? Inquiring minds want to know. So the purpose of teacher training, I thought, was to, um, correct effectiveness in teachers' academics. So I thought that was a huge board priority. So this type of class doesn't fit that. So we're just asking the board to please look into what the District Counseling Department is promoting, um, for the staff and the students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joel Sorensen.
Hi, good evening, Board. Um, my name is Joel Sorensen. I'm a U C C S student and a D eleven resident. Um, just wanted to thank you and Mr. Gall, uh, for the amazing work you've done with a great start to the school year. It was really encouraging to hear, uh, the principal, Madison's principal's presentation. That was awesome. Um, so much has changed for the better in D eleven, uh, since you were elected almost a year ago. Um, you've broken free of the hyper-politicization that plagued D eleven in the past and you've worked diligently to recover from the pandemic and the struggles that predated the pand, uh, the pandemic with your renewed focus on academic excellence for D eleven students. Um, I live and work in downtown Colorado Springs and would like to one day raise a family here in the D eleven area. Um, seeing the path that the board and Mr. Gall has for the district, um, it has made me optimistic that if I did, I could confidently have kids in a D eleven school one day. Uh, your willingness to be honest about our district's struggles and tackle them head on inspires confidence in the community you're representing. Um, you know, I, I think as was mentioned earlier, there's a lot of detractors that'll come to these board meetings. But, um, I think that it's a, you guys have been doing a great job and I just hope you guys feel encouraged by the community that, that put you here and, and keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Joel Hall.
Thank you, Superintendent, President, members of the board. My daughter currently goes to Jack Swagger Elementary School. She has a disease. It's called glycogen storage disease. It causes her to need tube feedings and low blood sugars. So since she started school, she's been able to be fed out in the hallway and she's been allowed to have her cell phone because it helps distract her from the feedings because she gets nauseous when she has the, uh, when she has the feedings. Uh, last week, we had a problem where she had a low blood sugar, where it went down to fifty-three. Um, she ended up having to go into the bathroom and call my wife because she is terrified to talk to her E A, who harasses and bullies her on a pretty constant basis. Uh, my wife called and she has pretty strong words for the school because that is a pretty unacceptably low blood sugar to have. And in fact, my daughter was too fearful to communicate with the E A. Says a lot about what was going on there. Uh, my wife went in on Monday and she talked to Mr. Nason, the principal there at Jack Swagger, and we thought it was resolved. That night when I picked up my daughter from school and brought her home, she was in tears because they moved her to the health room and they told her that the rules in the health room, that she's not allowed to have her cell phone in there to help with her nauseousness and told her that it wasn't their problem if she didn't have anything to do with she was being fed. And that sounds an awful lot like it's reprisal to me. So we went in yesterday and we talked to Ms. Behringer, the vice principal, and had what I thought was a productive meeting. We asked that Ms. Carr, the E A who bullies and intimidates her so badly that she doesn't wanna even go to school anymore and cries when we try to take her, be removed from the equation. We were told that that was all on the table and available. We asked that she be able to be, choose her place of feeding, most likely back in the hallway where she would be allowed to use her cellphone again. That was not done. They went, she basically told us that all these things were easy to be taken care of, and when it came time, uh, last night after school hours when she couldn't no longer be contacted, she sent this email to my wife and I and basically said that every single item on the list that she had said was an easy fix that the school is not going to be able to do. I take my children's education extremely seriously. I was here last year for my son, and he got left on the side of the road by Mitchell's bus system. I will not have my daughter going to a school where she is being bullied and intimidated by faculty or staff. It will not happen. We have enough trouble in schools with kids doing the bullying. We don't need that. I will take this to the state. I will take this to court. I don't care how far I have to take this, and my daughter will not be treated like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Hall. I know that you checked a box, asking for an administrator to contact you, and somebody will get in touch with you. That's all we have for Citizen Commons today. Thank you for all your comments and, um, sharing your thoughts and, uh, feedback. The board appreciates hearing from you, and your feedback helps us better do our work. Moving on to special reports, uh, board member reports. Are there any board member reports? And I have Director Daniels first.
Oh, thank you. I, I just wanted to acknowledge the school visits I had over the week and how it was amazing to be in the schools with the kids and the staff and just visiting all of the great things that are happening. So, I wanted to acknowledge Dalton Family Odyssey as well as, uh, Eastlake. And, um, thank you for your time. I sincerely appreciate it. Also, uh, attended the CASB conference last week, and it was really amazing. Had a great time getting trained and learning more about what's happening in and around the state. Very, very, uh, great resources as well for the community to learn more. Also, just, uh, parent-teacher conferences are going on this tonight as well as tomorrow and possibly Friday. Got a chance to get a few of those in tonight, which I'm very happy about, but we'll finish those up tomorrow. And, um, I don't know if you guys know, Dordie's in the playoffs. I am so excited that the team, football team, made it to the playoffs. That's really exciting. Marching band at Dordie also got in the finals, so a lot of things are happening for our students in their clubs, and that's really exciting. A few more fall festivals are going on, so please support and fundraising. All different kinds of clubs, all different kind of situations. I know that there is, um, so many things that we can get our hands into and support our students and our schools, and I just highly encourage you to do that. So, yeah, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Daniels, and thank you for mentioning about the parent-teacher conferences. And, uh, as Director Daniels mentioned, I encourage all the parents, the board encourages all the parents, to participate in these parent-teacher conferences. It's really critical that you guys engage with the, uh, teachers. It's a two-way communication process, not only over the next couple of days, but throughout the entire, um, academic year. So, the stu- the teachers and the parents can have a conversation about each student's strengths and needs, and you can be there to support the students at home. And so, your students can grow and thrive academically. And one other quick reference on that, as you complete the pair, as you go for the parent-teacher conferences, we are also going to have the Five Essential Parent Survey put out at that time, so take this opportunity. It's just a quick survey. It'll take you less than five minutes. There'll be a QR code out there. Scan it and complete the, uh, Five Essential Survey because it helps us, uh, get a feedback on the climate and culture in that school and what are areas that we can improve on. Director Art.
Thank you. I was able to visit Swagert and Saban this week and just learn about some of the amazing things that our middle schools are doing to address their, the students' academic needs and behavior issues that many of our schools have been challenged with over the last year. Also, I wanted to note that North isn't the only school with upcoming drama performances or orchestral performances. It's amazing, and unfortunately, people are just going to have to go to these performances back-to-back every day, maybe, maybe one, two in a day. We have Matilda at Swagert next week, Clash of Clix, um, at Mitchell, the ninth, 10th, or no, 10, 11, 12, I think, A Christmas Carol at Coronado, and man, Middle School is also having an event that same couple of days. So, I hope, um, folks will go out and support our kids and their programs. Also, just wanted to remind folks that ballots have been sent out and early, early voting centers are open, so please vote. Ballots are due no later than 7:00 PM on November 8th. Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you again, Director Art, for sharing all that, um, wonderful, um, uh, the arts and drama things that are going on in the school district. It's a good problem to have. After the last couple of years, when everything was socially distanced and our schools were not participating, it's a good problem to have that our students are participating, and we saw a good bunch of students here act, and I'm looking forward to attending some of those, too. Director Nelson.
I wanted to share about an opportunity that a few board members, um, President Mopakum, Director Ott, and myself, and then Mr. Gaul also was able to visit the Starbase Program at Peterson Air Force Base. Phenomenal program. I mean, the kids are hands-on in their, in their paperwork. They have a quotation of hands-on, minds-on. I really love that because that's exactly what we saw. Oh, there's pictures. Good job.
I have you covered.
Yeah. So, for example, this day that we were there, the students were, um, each taking on a role as an engineer, a mathematician, a chemist, or a, there was a fourth one, do you remember? Oh, project manager. And so, they would take turns being each role, and they had, you know, Alka-Seltzer Plus in a little container and then adding water and just measuring how high it shot up in a tube. And, I mean, the kids were so engaged and, um, talking about mass and gravity. I mean, there was real learning happening, and so I wanted to highlight this tonight to encourage our principals and teachers that in the spring, I believe April, they will be emailing our schools to see if you would like to participate. And it's, um, they'll work with you on your schedule if you want to come for a whole week, five days, or if you want to spread it out over one day a week, over five weeks. But just an excellent program that, uh, is really getting our kids engaged in the science, technology, engineering field, and it's free, and they want to partner with District 11. So, um, principals, teachers, please, please consider, uh, participating. It's currently at the elementary school level. There is potential for it to be middle school. It used to be middle school, but, you know, if we show enough interest, maybe they'll bring it back. So, um, I also wanted to just, um, remind, uh, the community that the board sends out letters occasionally, periodically. We're trying to just keep you all informed, and a, a letter just came out this afternoon. It's a little lengthy, but there's a lot of good information in it. So, if you're kind of curious about, um, what we've been up to, what the district administration and the board have been working on over the last couple of months, I highly recommend you go read that letter and reach out to us if you have questions about anything you see in it. There's some exciting things happening. You know, more preschool opportunities, tuition opportunities, um, for two-year college. There's just so much good stuff in there, so go check it out. I also wanted to just end with thanking the staff. I know, I appreciate the public comments encouraging the board, but I really want to recognize all the hard work that's taking place with our staff at all levels. We are moving fast. I mean, the, the pace that we have set is incredible and not probably sustainable. We know that, and there is a sense of urgency, and I appreciate everyone, uh, owning that sense of urgency and just know that we recognize it and are very grateful. And, um, hopefully, we'll, we'll kind of settle in now that we've got some things in place. So, thank you all for your hard work.
So, thank you for sharing that report, and, uh, all of us who were there at that Starbase Program, participating out there, was the Rogers Elementary students who were there, and I don't know if you mentioned that. It was just amazing watching the transformation of the students. Some of these students, the teacher said that they are more reserved, don't speak up in the classroom, but when you take them to a hands-on project, when they have to measure and do that real-world life things out there, they just open up, and every student was engaged, every student, there was no discipline problem out there, uh, none of that, and this program is available for free, and some of our schools participate in it. They gave us a list of 10 schools that participate in it, and more schools should participate in it, and they have this opportunity available where students can go and enjoy this kind of, um, experience. And I want to give a shout out to two people. Usually, I see Mr. and Ms. Victoria Henderson at the board meetings. Today, she's not there. She was there with us out there. She's the, uh, military liaison. And then Ms. Sarah Knox, who is the director of Starbase, who invited us to that program, and we look forward to that partnership going forth. Director Loma.
Oh, first of all, you know, we don't really address comments, but, um, sir, um, your words have touched me, and, and I know it's probably to touch everybody on this board and, um, take it to heart, and if there's anything I can do personally, I would like to lend myself to you. But we won't, I know that, um, our superintendent is going to see to that something is done. And so, thank you for your, for the love you're showing for your children, and it's not, does not go unnoticed. Secondly, I want to, uh, address the kind words from people. We appreciate that. It helps me, um, uh, confirm my decision to run for, for this office because I, as you may be aware, I was hesitant. I've been here, done this, and I didn't know if I wanted to do it again. But you encouraged me, and I might even run for reelection with those kind of words. But I thank you. I want to thank those, and, and now, um, I want to address, um, Joe Scott. His address is a perfect segue, uh, to my concerns. The NAA, his parent organization, or I can call his master, are, is culpable for the destruction of public education. All scores are down nationwide as a result of his organization. The sexualizing of children is rampant as a result of Joe's, uh, edu- uh, organization. He divides people by race. He brings a political ideology in here which does not belong. We want to focus on math, English, science, not the things that you want to focus on. Uh, and these are just a few issues that Joe Scott supports. So, it's very difficult, uh, to take a rebuke from a non-elected, using president, um, whose policies protect adults while hurting every child in District 11. We cannot make a move without trying to dance around a document that is useless. In fact, it has been determined the most useless master agreement in the country by many lawyers. So, the NAA, uh, not the pandemic is, and its idiotic policies have destroyed public education. Ironically, ironically, I have to thank them because their work is so backwards, uh, they've exposed themselves. And I, I would not, I was questioning whether to share this, but I thank Joe for stirring the pot. I don't play on tennis much, but the ball is in your court.
So, thank you, Director Loma. I don't have any other board members here, so I guess I'll have to follow you now. And just like I said with Citizen Commons, one of the, any one of the board member comments here reflects the views and thoughts of that board member and doesn't reflect the views and thoughts of the entire board. Can you open, uh, that up? And I have, um, some things that I want to share, too, with you guys about what I've been doing for the past couple of weeks. And these are some of the visits that we talked about and, uh, Director Nelson already talked about the Starbase visit, and, uh, what a wonderful time we had there with, um, our students from Rogers Elementary. So, I'll skip that, and I'll go to the next one. This was, um, the event that I went to Dordie High School, but I think, um, uh, we had this program, um, yep. Okay, I got it. We had this program at, um, those are the bottom two pictures that I have up there. We had this program at every one of our high schools, but I attended the Dordie, uh, High School one last week, which was the free college application days. And I want to give a shout out, and as I'm going through today my board members' report, I'm going to give a shout out to some of these people who are really making a difference in our students' life on a day-in and day-out basis. And I already gave a shout out to Ms. Sarah Knox and Victoria Henderson, and here I want to give a shout out to our staff, Ms. Leilani Mullins, Kristen Miller, and Melissa Smith. And these are folks that are working in our, um, uh, concurrent enrollment department, college, uh, application, uh, the, uh, the work-based learning programs, and to see the engagement of the Dordie seniors out there. That, uh, library room was packed, and we had representatives from all the, um, post-secondary education from Colorado and Wyoming, too, out there. They had those pennants, the flags out there. Students could make a commitment. They were asking such wonderful questions to the representatives from the colleges about scholarships, uh, the places where they can stay. So, a lot of great, a lot of important decisions were made by the students out there. So, I want to give a shout out to, uh, the team that made this happen out there. And that, and later that evening, I had, uh, the opportunity to attend, um, the parent academy that was going on at Coronado High School. Duane Robertson and the same team that I mentioned, uh, the three of them were out there, and about 75 to 100, uh, students and parents, uh, were in attendance. I would venture to guess that anybody that went into that meeting, left that meeting a little bit more knowledgeable. I certainly did. I serve on the board, and a lot of the programs that they talked about, uh, I had no idea that this was available for our, uh, high school students, that they can take advantage of this program. So, with the change in the Ascent Program, which is our fifth-year option, a new program that I found out, which is called TREP, T-R-E-P, and I think, uh, Dr. Mendelsberg is smiling at me, so, uh, he talked to me about another acronym, CLEP, uh, C-L-E-P, College Level Examination Program. Along with our traditional concurrent enrollment and other certification opportunities through CTE, the possibilities for motivated high school students are endless. That message was communicated to the parents, and there were several students out there, too, that this is something that parents should, uh, and the students should start exploring when they are there in middle school, to stop, to start mapping that pathway that they want to take and take classes accordingly, even when they enter the freshman year of, uh, college, so, uh, freshman year of high school. Uh, I thought it was very well done. We've heard attendance is a problem in several of our high schools. Discipline is a problem. Even when the students attend, they are not engaged. We got to be able to give them a reason to show up, and these programs and showing them that there is a light at the end of the tunnel, making that connection, that's going to be the hook that gets our students out there. So, uh, I thought our parents asked excellent questions. We got to have more of these parent academies, not only on this subject matter, but, uh, plethora of other educational subject matter to get our parents engaged. So, I hope, uh, we have one of these parent academy on the same subject matter at Dordie and Palmer and Mitchell High Schools, too. So, thank you for the work that you, you are doing, Dr. Mendelsberg, out there. Moving on, um, I want to give a shout out to the four people that I have up there. These are parents from, uh, Academy ACL, Angel Cardone, Emily Cohen, Callie, Callie McCarthy, and Janet Gray. So, these, uh, four parents, uh, raised auction packets for, um, codes for kids, um, and two of our schools benefited from that, Academy ACL and, um, uh, Queen Palmer Elementary. And you see the, uh, whole, uh, you know, the layer of codes out there, those were the codes that people who attended this fundraiser brought in, and that's all we had to bring in, a code each. And these codes were brand-new codes that went to Queen Palmer Elementary, um, uh, school. So, each elementary school student at Queen Palmer Elementary last week got a brand-new winter coat. How amazing is that? These are happening because of our partners that reach out to our, um, uh, schools and provide this opportunity. And so, I want to give a shout out to those four parents up there because those four parents put together this auction package, too, and which apparently raised about $11,000 in money, which is going to go straight to Academy ACL for their, uh, engagement programs, after-school engagement programs, and several other programs that they have. And engaged. PTA makes a difference, and those four parents made a difference by raising $11,000. They didn't come and ask us for support, they went and made it happen. So, GSD, isn't that right? Yeah, Get Stuff Done. So, they got stuff done. And then I want to give a shout out in the end to the two principals out there, Christina Butcher and Nikki Myers, and Anastasia Lockwood, who is the community liaison at Queen Palmer. A lot of the wonderful community partnership we have out there at Queen Palmer is because of Ms. Lockwood. She is so committed out there, so driven to wanting to do right by our students. And there are some amazing things happening at Queen Palmer. And Director Art and I were there to join in that, to celebrate them. So, thank you for that. I was there at Pendrose Elementary, I think was it last week, and Pendrose Elementary had a change in principal. We have hired their principal here to central admin. Our gain is their loss, though. You could see the difference that Ms. Tamara Forrest made in that school out there. The students lined up, the entire, wrapped around the school, and each one of them handed her a flower, or a card, or a banner that was made out there. And that's what it is all about. When you see the community react to a principal leaving that school, the emotions that were there, and she had a whole buggy wagon out there that had to carry all the stuff that she collected out there. And I'm sure she was touched by it. And she leaves an amazing legacy out there. And now, we have Ms. Katie Schoolmaster stepping in, and I'm sure she will follow in her footsteps and do the same thing. So, I want to give a shout out to Tamara Forrest and the staff, Kim Hill, out there, who made that thing happen, and all the amazing students, and the staff who sent Principal Forrest out the right way. I was there at the Homes PTA event, and I want to give a shout out to Carrie Krips, Amy Tasco, Jennifer Wiley, and Ms. Amanda Huber. Thank you for the invite. This was a game night that they had on a Thursday evening. And again, the community showed up. It was, they were playing basketball, dodgeball, and all kinds of board games out there. And pizza was served to the community. And just seeing all the parents come together out there, and just like I have been mentioning over and over again at the board meetings, there is hunger in our community to reengage with our schools after the last two years. So if you have community events, it's a great way to engage our parent community, and they will be there. I don't know about the dodgeball event. The parents were pitched against the students, you know, and I think parents were taking some of their frustration out on the students. They were just, but the students were giving them back too. So, it was good to see some good competition going on out there. And then I want to end with some other trick-or-treat events that I was at, and I'll start with Freedom Elementary. What an amazing program that they had out there. The parking lot was filled with cars out there, and the whole community showed up. The music was blasting. They made sure to let the community know that they were there. The fire engines were there, they were handing out candy for the kids. I have the picture of the principal who was out there, and we already know about her, Ms. Williams. She's the one that's got the Jurassic Park shirt and riding the dinosaur. And I want to give a shout out to Justin Admission and Amy Tolby. These are tireless parents out there. They don't want any recognition. They were filling all the candy bowl. Just, parents like those make a difference. And the Freedom staff was out there. Just a great community when they had food trucks out there. And that Friday evening was the perfect weather for Halloween, and I saw at least 200, 300 families, students out there, and they were constantly moving and coming around. So, great opportunity. So, and then I was also at North and Taylor. We heard from the North students just now. And North, the students, you got students coming from the feeder schools, coming up there. The elementary schools, students were coming there, and then the North middle school students were serving them candy. They were setting an amazing example. Some of these elementary school students, in a couple of years, are going to be at North. So, these students were the role models. I have five students up there. I've got their names somewhere, but the names that I have up there are the staff and the parents who put together this program. Rose Davis, Robert Moore, Heather Foster, Cindy Deloche, and Stephanie Risley, parents and staff members who made a difference serving that community. And finally, at Taylor, it was Brandy Morris, Cindy Foley, and Sarah Miller. We have some of our teachers out there dressed, and they were face painting. Just amazing opportunities to engage with our community, and this will make a difference in that school's enrollment in the coming years. When you engage with that community in that manner, the families out there appreciate it. Director Bankus was with me. I ran into her at a couple of these events. So, I just want to give a shout out to all these parents. What was evident, and I'll finish with this, we have an engaged parent community. We see that in the boardroom during passionate community comments. Some are supportive of our work, and some are not. But it's a sign of a vocal and engaged community, and I appreciate that. That discourse and dialogue is only going to make us better. So, but when I visited our schools, I saw the other side of our community. I saw the silent majority that when one of our, Mr. Dill, I think, commented on, these are silent parents, but they are always present. They are unheralded, but always willing to lean in to fill the gap or void, asking for nothing in return, just willing to give. They are our silent stars. I have the utmost respect for the work that they are doing. They want no recognition, and are the first to give credit to others when something is going right, and always the first to step up and help when something is going wrong. Every one of those names I mentioned belong in that category. They are doing right by our students and putting a smile on a child's face. And that, to me, is the definition of a hero. Our schools are better off because of these unsung heroes. So, thank you. I just want to finish my comment by saying Happy Halloween. Safe trick-or-treating for our students. I hope all of you find treats in your baskets. And the weather is supposed to be nice, I think. And for a couple of years, it's been challenging with social distancing and stuff. So, I hope you all go out and enjoy the tradition that brings joy and laughter for all our kids. Thank you. With that, Superintendent's report.
Good evening, Board. President Mal Pakem, community, and particularly staff. As the slides come up, in keeping with our GSD theme, we'll continue to do some shout-outs. I want to start with what was a tremendous event for us today here in the Colorado Springs School District 11, opening an additional preschool classroom based upon demand at Chapita Elementary School. I've got a couple of stories to tell on this slide. I arrived here in July, and I saw the very first low-hanging fruit I could do on enrollment was to take places that we had wait lists and open up more classrooms. And so, we have a rolling waitlist for pre-K programs. And even though the state is seeking to implement a universal pre-K, we didn't want to wait until next year. And so, we went out and surveyed our schools and found that we had at least six schools that were immediately ready to expand preschool programs. And today, we did a ribbon-cutting, and next week, we will have 10 new children at Chapita in a pre-K classroom. We could not be more excited. So, I really want to give a great GSD shout-out to Sarah Carlson, our early childhood ed director. Of course, Principal Sarah Scott at Chapita. Chapita is always welcome and eager to be part of leading District 11 into a new vision. And then I really want to spend just a minute on Ms. Lori Bender. I had the great fortune of meeting and interviewing Ms. Lori Bender at one of our micro-hiring fairs over the summer, which again, is a new initiative in District 11. Instead of passively waiting for people to find their way to an application on a webpage to determine whether or not they want to be a partner, we went out into our community and created four different micro-hiring events. And here I find Ms. Lori Bender. Very similar history to my own. This is a spouse of a military member who's moved around and has educational experiences for 10-plus years, but never for really more than a year and a half at a time. That doesn't communicate well when you're interviewing for a job. It says you move. It says you can't find a home. But here in District 11, we understand our military community. And Lori was hell-bent on wanting to be a pre-K teacher. And so, we got her into the hiring process without actually knowing if we would have a pre-K opening. But we saw, and we matched our vision to action, and we delivered. And there she is on the left. She's the one in the cream pants and the maroon shirt, furthest away from me in the picture there, getting ready to cut that ribbon. And the story goes deeper for Lori. Her son Jeremiah is at Coronado High School. He scored a perfect score on the AP Computer Science Principles exam. He was called by College Board and told he was one of only 196 perfect scores in the country. And so, we are winning in District 11. We are winning because we have Lori on our team. We're winning because we have Jeremiah at Coronado. And we are winning because we are opening pre-K classrooms on a rolling basis throughout the year, whether the state funds them next year or not. Getting children earlier acclimated to school socially, emotionally, academically, is a win for everybody. It's a win for us. It helps our enrollment, and it helped meet the demand that our community is so clearly telling us that they have. My second GSD award goes to Mark Miller. He's the admin building manager here at 115 North El Paso Street. This building is phenomenal. It is immaculate. It is spotless. And Mark is everywhere. He continues to fill in gaps at many of our schools when we have call-outs. I think Mark has worked so hard that he can't find his razor, and he hasn't shaved since I arrived in July. Another huge shout-out to Jason Bullock on our IT network team. Notice the seamless nature and how every building you walk into, it just works. IT is the backbone of an infrastructure of an organization that you just don't know about it until it doesn't work. And so, it's great that we don't know about it, and if nobody's ever seen Jason Bullock, that just means it's working. So, thanks to Jason and all the IT team for what they're doing here. I cannot sing enough praises about Principal George Smith at Mitchell High School. If you have not been to Mitchell, go there. I was there again last night for an aviation advisory board meeting. We have aviation science classes in our CTE pathway at Mitchell High School. Over 10% of the student population at Mitchell High School has had access to one of these four courses. They have flight simulators. They have drones. They have recently agreed to purchase a kit airplane, which they will build in a classroom at Mitchell High School. And if you don't know, that Mitchell High School is named after General Billy Mitchell. If you don't know the history, we'll get a history teacher up here to give you that report. George is leading, and leading with abandon, and knows exactly the vision that he's created. Again, if you haven't been to Mitchell High School, go there. You'll be impressed. Now, I'm going to try something new. We've heard enough of adults, so I've asked students to nominate teachers that they want to give shout-outs to. So, I'm going to ask Doherty High School team to come forward and take over the microphone and tell me what it is that you're telling me about your wonderful teacher. Christian and Jakara, come on forward.
Go ahead, just right there. You tell the world. You can sit down. You can sit down.
We would like to nominate Ms. Medbury because she challenges her students, but also provides true support to them. Amongst all that, she's very understanding, makes classes exciting, and pushes her students to be the best versions of themselves.
Okay. I thought it was only one person speaking, so let me get it pulled up real quick. Ms. Medbury is a really outgoing person that cares a lot about her students inside and outside of school. She dedicates time and energy to make sure her students are doing good and being the best version of them.
Is the Palmer team here? I haven't seen anyone from Palmer.
We do have the teacher here, Ms. Gold.
Yeah.
The student, I believe, has a commitment tonight as well for an honor event, sir.
Please, come on up. Tell us about why your student nominated you. Come all the way up to the microphone.
I thought I was coming because we were honoring her.
Well, she was going to in turn honor you.
Okay. I am lucky to have students like Ellen.
I guess Palmer is a great place to be. I'm inspired by all the other teachers who really care about the students. To all the parents here, we care about the kids, and we want the best for them. And we give everything we have so we can serve them as they deserve.
Can you tell us about the Fine Arts Center, the setup?
Yes. So, Ellen is dancing tonight at school. But November 1st and 2nd, I sponsor a dance group, and they will be performing at the Fine Arts Center with professional dancers. They are students, but, so it's a lot of fun. And we created an ofrenda to honor one of the traditions from the Mexican-American culture. So, it has been really exciting, you know. And it's a community. These kids love to help each other, help the teachers. So, they make it easy, you know. It's really an honor to work with them.
Great. Thank you. Jalissa from Tesla, come forward.
Good evening, Board, and thank you for having me. My name is Jalissa, and I'm a junior at Tesla. I came to Tesla because I was behind on credits, and in the process of picking them up, I found myself in Ms. Annie's CTE 8th class. She's helped me develop a plan to graduate on time and focus on my career. I used to not want to go to school, but now I look forward to it because she makes me feel wanted here. For anyone that doesn't like a traditional high school or wants to graduate early, should consider going to Tesla. Thank you.
Okay, that's it for our GSD awards. Now, we have a little bit of business to take care of, our capacity report. Jim Mason, if you can come forward. And I think we're going to try and chime in, our CAO, Tamara Acevedo. Tamara is, to the board, Tamara is off-station. She's at Charleston County, South Carolina, giving supports there on their strategic vision and their instructional leadership as part of a relationship that she brings to our district through UVA. And so, we're looking to expand that through the University of Virginia, through their Darden Business and Leadership Development Program. So, exciting times for the district for her to be able to share. Hi, Tamara. Go ahead, Jim.
Hello, everyone.
You've got the mic. I think Ms. Acevedo has the first few slides, if we can hear her.
Can you hear me? Good. All right, great. Yes, I do have the beginning, and excited to be here with everybody tonight to talk about the work from our capacity committee. And I just want to start by thanking our committee members. That included our district staff, our leaders, our educators, and community members. At points, we had up to 20 members. So, just really appreciative of the work and the continued work year after year. We're going to present tonight, Jim and I, on three areas. We'll start with the why, why we have the capacity committee, and the key areas of the report and terminology within that report. And then lastly, we'll go into the recommendation, the recommendations that the committee has made based on our current context and the report information that we have. With that, we'll go to Slide 2, which is the why. Why we work as a capacity committee and put together a report. So, it's important to note that the district is to define and maintain a district school-building student capacity model and an enrollment capacity for each and every school in our district. We're also charged with maintaining this information and making it available on our district website, our model information, and also making sure that it's reviewed at least annually. And lastly, it's for the purpose of providing information to our district and the board when making informed decisions on underutilization, school boundaries, and facilities. And so, the committee is able to make recommendations based on the information. So, again, as Superintendent Gall stated, I'm joined tonight by Principal Jim Mason, who's up at the podium, one of our amazing school leaders who was part of this important committee. He'll go over some of the areas looked at within the report and that terminology in the reports that, again, have been posted on board docs. It is also what our committee reviewed and discussed to make our recommendations. One note, it's important to note- Um, one note, it's important to note that currently, um, tonight, we're making general recommendations that are based on our current context and current work as a district and Board, um, which right now has been our strategic planning work, including the development and adjustment of our, um, UDEP or Unified District Improvement Plan, and then our continued work and adjustment, um, that will be ongoing and forthcoming with our academic master's plan, um, that the Board will get an update on, um, in the future, um, based on our superintendent's, uh, request and charge and work. Um, with that, I'll turn it over to, um, Principal, um, Mason, Jim.
Thank you, Tamara. Uh, so my part, being a math teacher, of course, is key terminology. So as the, the capacity committee, we've kind of morphed as we've gone through and, and identified different ways that we look at schools. So some of the terminology that is in the report, we talk about maximum capacity. And as you are aware, our buildings are very old, so they're very different sizes. But the maximum capacity takes the number of teaching stations that are determined by, uh, the school architect and the principal and, and, and a collaborative effort, and multiplies by that ratio of high school, middle school, and elementary to give you what, if every room was used, what that capacity would be. The second term that we use is building capacity. And this capacity sets aside or takes away those parts of the building that are not considered a teaching station or too small. And that gives us what we then consider building capacity, that if all those rooms that were able to be reused are used, again with that same ratio, that would set up the building capacity. The third that we talk about is program capacity. And this is where we begin to set aside or take out or add credits to the building. This could be a room, uh, for example, be a weight room possibly that's not used, it is considered a teaching station, may not be used every period, but is then not considered as part of that, uh, the capacity that could be used every period for students. Excuse me. Brings us into what we call functional capacity. And this describes really what that building functionally can handle in an educational There's more detailed reports in the, in the board packet that you do have, but in that functional capacity, what we look at is the numbers of seats available that we can use all day long, every period. Not that the set asides or the various building, um, carvols, I guess what we would take. The functional capacity, uh, what we look at is, in the second bullet, is the number of available seats in the school is calculated by the functional capacity minus enrollment. So we take our functional capacity in a very simple, uh, example, if functional capacity was at 100 and our enrollment was 70, we would then have 30 seats available, uh, in, in the, uh, in the report that you see. Many of our schools also have portables, uh, and that becomes kind of an issue as we start to look at how those portables are used. We use portables that want to address overcrowding issues. Uh, if we do have that ability, we can move classes or programs out into the buildings which then kind of adjusts and moves what that capacities are. So we saw this year, there were several, uh, buildings that had re, kind of repurposed their portables, which then had an impact on the report, on the percentages that you will see in that report. Then that gives us what our school utilization percentages are. And in the report, you have a giant spreadsheet with multiple colors, multiple columns, uh, between, uh, the capacity, building capacity, functional capacity, and then the usage and the percentage that is in there. You see two functional capacities, one for capacity with portables and one with all portables. So schools that did have portables, there are two, two functional capacities within And everything that we work on is, is built around a teaching station. And a teaching station is a classroom identified with 500 square feet or more that's available. And when you think about it, 504, excuse me, 540 square feet, not a very large area. So that, we come back to some of those building set asides, those offsets within the program or within the, the capacity report that you have available to you. So when we talk about teaching stations, it's a 540 square foot room or bigger that's been identified that can be used for students throughout the day. So I'm going to hand this back to Tamara and she's going to talk about the recommendations from the committee and then next steps.
Thank you, Jim. Um, so if we can have this slide on the, uh, recommendations. Um, I just want to, um, remind us, um, of the note that I made earlier. Um, it's important to note that, again, our committee is making, um, these general recommendations based on our current work and context as a district, um, which is the work on our strategic planning work, um, and the development and adjustment of, um, our academic master plan that will be forthcoming. Um, so as you can see here, um, our recommendations as a committee are that no schools are capped, um, for enrollment for, um, for the school year, that no attendance or area boundary changes, uh, changes are made at this time, that we, um, as a district, um, investigate school choice, um, and how it impacts enrollment, that we build awareness of, of causes for over and under utilization as District 11 addresses the need to increase our enrollment. We know we have a very clear direction and work towards our enrollment goals. Um, and that we continue to develop, um, we continue the development of our academics master plan, as I said earlier, um, that is aligned with an updated five-year facilities plan. So we know that that work needs to, um, continue, um, and, and be done. Um, and that it's important that, um, those updates, um, in that development considers functional, um, school capacity. And then the last recommendation is that we study the number of and use of our portables, um, in the district based on the school's capacity, the current condition of those portables, and the district cost benefit analysis in con- uh, in conjunction with the increased demand, um, at our high, um, our current high-performance schools and the expansion of the initiative that Superintendent Gall talked about earlier, our preschool, our pre-K opportunities. Um, with that, those are the recommendations of our, uh, of our capacity committee. Again, a big thank you to the committee for their, um, dedication and work over this fall. I also want to give, um, a thank you, a big thank you to Clara Hollerbauer, um, who was our assistant, our co-lead, um, facilitator on the capacity committee and very appreciative of the time that she put in, um, to lead the work as well. Um, with that, uh, we will, um, uh, return it back to Superintendent Gall and the Board.
Yeah, I want to thank, uh, both Tamara and Jim for their work representing the committee. This is important work. It helps us frame to understand where opportunity is and how we maximize that. Uh, and then I want to give a shout out to, to Sheri as she's, uh, prodding away at something on her computer there, because she took the capacity report from last year and then went out and did the walk with other, uh, members of our team to find those pre-K opportunities. But we're, we're really dreaming big and we're thinking to ourselves, let's not be capacity limited on pre-K. There are modular units that are the nicest pre-K settings you will ever see. You can buy them fully furnished, ready to go. We run half-day pre-K programs and so we can position them on, uh, school grounds in a way that give easy access that we can both control and keep protected, that then frees up additional space for extra learning within some of our very high-demand elementary schools. If we think about the, the, the schools that are within a two or three mile range of where we sit right now, this is the place where we have steady demand and constant requests for permits. And so what if we were to add, uh, pre-K programs in modular settings that would then free up additional classrooms? But the, it is the capacity committee's work that, uh, forces us to ask those questions so that we can then make those policy decisions. But it's a, it's an exciting time. And, uh, that first recommendation of no caps, we instituted that this year as well, which also opened up opportunities. If there's an open room or an open seat in a building, it's part of school choice. We met the promise that we give to school leaders, which is if you beat your projection, we will get you the extra FTE. And we have done that. I want to thank the HR team for being aggressive in hiring towards those positions, but we've established a level of trust with school leaders that says, we want more kids. This is a school choice state, which says, parents are choosing the schools that they feel have the programs and the excellence that they can deliver. So where that demand is, we should be thinking harder about how to increase opportunity there. So thanks to Jim and to Tamara. Any questions from the Board for the committee?
Thank you. Thank you for the report, uh, and thank you for the capacity committee for doing all the work, too. I'll start off with a couple of questions and then, uh, the Board members can also, uh, punch in their buttons if they want to ask. Is it, yep. And then, I don't know if it's you or Ms. Acevedo who's going to take the lead in answering some of the questions. So one of the things that I saw in that report that was put out there, all counts, the school counts are of, uh, the first week in September, September 8th or, so I'm assuming some of those counts have changed, fluctuated since then.
Yes, they have. And then Tamara, if I mess up or you need to add more, uh, we worked very closely with Melissa, especially on the last two meetings, to make sure that we had accurate enrollment numbers. Uh, as we went through, we noticed some anomalies, so we reached out and got those enrollment numbers. Uh, so, uh, my understanding there is accurate as they could be for the time that the report was created.
Okay. So I'm still assuming those numbers are as of September 8th. That's what, uh, the report said. In the report, it said those enrollment numbers were as, were of September 8th, not a later time.
Tamara, you?
Yeah, you can assume that's what, what's written in the Board, uh, uh, in the report is correct.
Okay.
We also have Melissa Andrews, um, who's, uh, should be, I saw her, I think, on the screen earlier and we were texting earlier, but she's also, um, from, it sites, um, there as well and can, um...
What I can report to the Board is that this is the first year through centralized enrollment that we were actually tracking both system counts and what we would call butts and seat counts. And as we got just past Labor Day into September, the gap really narrowed and stayed very consistent into what we would call our actual count on October 3rd. Of course, that's not validated until we get through the state process. But any anomalies that we would see would be very small. Most of those changes happened right before Labor Day and then into Labor Day. But the tightness between the, uh, the first system count and the last hot count was much tighter than we had anticipated, which means that the, the enrollment changes were a lot more stable than anticipated.
Okay. Thank you for the feedback. The follow-up question I had on that was, I know that a support policy that says that this report has to come in front of the Board by October. Does it, uh, make more sense to get this capacity committee report a month or two months down the road when we have more certified counts in October? Just throwing it out there, is it something that we need to do by some, uh, constraints or law or requirements that we need to do this by October? Future thought, I may just throw it up.
I think that's future, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jim.
I think pushing it forward in the date after October, uh, may be beneficial. We found ourselves kind of cramped for time to make sure that we met the timelines that were in the, uh, in the Board policies.
Okay. Thank you. Some thought for the future, and, um, I think it's defined in a Board policy, so if the Board has to change that, we got to have that feedback.
And Tamara, was there anything you wanted to add on that? Hope I didn't step on your toes.
No, that was perfect. That was perfect. It is something, you know, it didn't, it, it, it was, um, challenging to meet the deadline. It didn't impact, I think, for the state of where we're at right now, the recommendations that the committee would make, but certainly, um, President Malpakum, it could for the future. And so it is something we should look into, um, as we move forward and we develop out further the academic master plan in alignment with our, um, five-year, um, facilities plan.
Okay. Data, Rock.
Thank you. Um, and for those who can hear the high-pitched ringing noise, if it's not just me, um, they are working on it, so. Um, just a couple of things to the point, mostly about teachers and the point of hiring for the needs if people exceed, um, expectations. But we have positions that aren't filled. So, you know, during my visits to some of the schools in the last week, there's been concern that they can't handle in-school suspension and things like that because they can't hire the staff. So just, I, I love that we are bringing in more students, enrollment is increasing and fabulously so in some places, but we still have so many needs. So I do hope that, and I'm sure, that our personnel folks are working on that. Um, second, speaking of teachers, the, the report mentions that you expanded the membership to include more teachers, but I don't actually see any in the list of folks who are listed, so comprised of following individuals. And so I just, I hope that if we're going to try and include more teachers, there are actually some teachers. Thanks.
Thank you for that, um, for that feedback. And, and yes, we need to, we need to do, um, uh, continued work and ensure that our, that we can, um, attract and get membership from our, um, educators. And I know I received, um, recently, um, an email from our union president on that and, um, we will work towards that goal in the future. Very good feedback and noted and agreed.
Yeah, I do want to, I do want to comment on the, the contagious nature of winning. Um, and we do give hiring authority to principals and we interview at the school level. We don't, uh, place teachers, uh, by central mandate. And so schools that are over-enrolling are very attractive to teachers as they are looking for work, because that is clearly a place where there is strong engagement, strong planning, higher-order questioning, additional programming. It becomes a contagious opportunity. And so without a statistic in front of me, I would say generally, every place that is asked for additional FTE already has a short list of individuals that have expressed interest to want to work there. And so again, this idea of if I tell two friends and you tell two friends and so on and so on, parts of our community that have strong demand, have strong demand not just at the student and family level, they also have strong demand at the staff level. And so what we need to be able to do is to communicate the value in filling some of our harder-to-fill opportunities, so we don't end up in the death spiral of decreasing enrollment means decreasing staffing. Decreasing staffing means decreasing, decreasing supports and/or opportunities, which then leads to decreasing enrollment. And so we are committed as a, as a, as a district to being able to try and stop that loss and try and do everything we can to make sure that there are minimum amounts of staffing requirements and programs available in all of our schools. But we will continue to allow teachers and principals to do that self-selection through the hiring process.
Thank you. I'm looking for any further comments or questions from Board members. I do have a couple of comments that I will make. These are just observations that I got from the report, um, and if there are any questions or you want to comment back, let me know. You can provide a comment, too. Uh, what I noticed is when you look at the schools which have a high positive net permit, there's a students coming in versus students going out, most of them, or just about all of them are not priority improvement or turnaround. So most of them are performance schools. And that goes to what, uh, Superintendent Gall was saying, parents make choice which school that they want to send them to. Um, and those are the schools that are performing well. Academically, they do look at that. Uh, on the flip side, most of the high negative permit schools are turnaround and PI schools, but, uh, priority improvement schools. And, um, uh, I know that there are some great things going on at Mitchell. I'm glad that, um, Superintendent Gall called out, um, and gave a shout out to the Principal George Smith out there. But Mitchell has, I, I was surprised with one of the observations that I made. Mitchell has the most students living in the boundary area with, uh, 2,000-plus students in the high school, um, zones that are, I, I thought Doherty would have the most students, but Mitchell has the most students living in that, uh, area, but 1,250 of those students are choicing out to other District 11 schools, okay? I don't even know how many are choicing out, out of the district, because this data only gives me 1,250 that are choicing into other D11 schools. So, uh, we are doing some good things out there. We are trying to address Mitchell's needs, but it is a concern we got to, uh, be more aggressive in marketing the schools and turning that, uh, school around. Uh, West Midland had high negative permits out there also. A couple of things that was, uh, surprising to me, Hubbard had 180 permits out of that school. That was surprising to me. Freedom, similarly, is surprising... Freedom, similarly, is surprising to me, with 171 permits choicing out of that school. Two schools that are really doing well, but I think both have strong building leadership out there. And I certainly expect like what I shared in my board member's report, they are going to, the building leadership there is going to make a difference. And Hubbard is also going to be an outdoor educational pathway school, Trailblazer, okay? Which brings me to a concern out there. It is really concerning. It stands out to me out there. It's a, we talk about shiny new things making a difference. It's a brand-new, one of our brand-new buildings out there. But it's a 32% capacity right now, okay? We put an after-school program in there, hoping that that would make a difference. The one thing that was shocking to me when I looked at it, the Trailblazer boundary area, there are only 138 students living in that boundary area, and they are getting over 110 students or whatever it is that are going to Trailblazer. So we are not setting them up for success when the way we have boundary Trailblazer out there, we have only 138 students. Where are they supposed to get the students from? From surrounding districts? So it's screaming for something different to attract students at Trailblazer, so. And we have another program out there, Spark Online. That enrollment is a concern for me too because we put a high school in there, ninth and 10th grade student, with the expectation that the student enrollment is going to be 300-plus, and they are now dropping students and at 211, and we resourced that program as much as we can Spark Online out there. So those are some thoughts and feedback.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a much longer conversation for us to have with the community as well. If you want to look at this report as leading or lagging information. And so with choice, boundaries are irrelevant. And so even Jenkins, which is the gem of our middle school programs by reputation and by numbers, when you look at those numbers, without people choicing in, 100% of the families that could attend in Boundary only puts them between 50 and 60% capacity, which again would be a Trailblazer situation, which says the Boundary is no longer built to be reflective of the demand of the school. Yet Jenkins, for all the right reasons, because of the strong programming and because of the reputation and the strength of instruction and engagement that we're having, continues to beat projections and last year's enrollment. And so the question we will have to grapple with, and I know the Capacity Committee dealt with this, is is the Boundary a starting point or is the Boundary an excuse for why we're not getting there? If any family can choice into any school in the state, as long as they can provide transportation, then does the Boundary itself matter whatsoever? And so I think it's an interesting question on whether or not we think we're chasing after the family or we're building a vision of where we think families can go. And the AMP work that I'll bring to the work session will take that to the next level. That says, where do we believe that we can make bets? That will be responsive to the signal that we're clearly getting from the community. Trailblazer does continue to be a challenge. Yet there are a huge number of families that live in that area, right? And so we have to determine, more than an after-school program, what do we believe is the footprint required north and west of I-25? And I, and I'm confident that we can get there. I appreciate the work of the Capacity Committee to deal with these numbers of determining whether or not, again, if they're leading indicators or if they're lagging indicators. I think the middle-of-the-road position that they took that says this is not the year to go after reboundering or closure or consolidation. Denver Public Schools announced this morning, 10 schools for collapse and for closure or consolidation. You heard it all, up and down the radio all day long. Nobody said if they were at 60% utilization or not. But telling the community that you want to close a school then creates an entirely different conversation. And you will find that the costs and savings in closing a school is usually not worth the amount of time and energy that you put in. I believe that District 11 is on the rise. Again, I say it all the time, you can't swing a dead cat downtown without hitting a crane. There are more families. I met with the Downtown Development Team today. They said they have 2,000 units getting ready to come online in the next year for Downtown. We have to have education solutions for those young families. You meet in an apartment, you'll get married, you'll have a baby. We want to keep them in District 11. I don't want them feeling that the only option they have is to exit the Downtown corridor and go to 20 and go to 49 and go to 38. We can be a full-service solution for families. And so I think we should give this Capacity Committee a little bit of runway to be able to match to the AMP and understand where we think we can get to in the next five years.
Yeah, that's a good summary of what we can do. And exactly like you, Superintendent Gall, I think the vision for District 11, I think we are on the rise. And it shows in the enrollment numbers too. For the last four years, we've been trending downwards. We've lost 4,400 students, but now we are flatlining. The message is resonating with the public and we are getting, we heard from Madison Principal today, they have 15 new enrollment students, enrolled students. So, and areas where there are challenges, maybe we use AMP and provide a pathway school out there. And that's maybe what Trailblazer should be, whatever that pathway is. So thank you for that report, Director Loma.
Yeah, you stirred me, my, my thought process when, first of all, great work here. I'm looking at everything, so it's really comprehensive. And you can, and I want to speak to the, the culture shift. Things are changing and I sense it. We had a meeting, a work, work session a little while ago, and we talked about actually partnering with charter schools to help our declining enrollment, which is something we would have never done before, which I think is a, it's a great thing. And, and I know many of those operators, they've been, they're waiting, they've been waiting for this day where we can extend because they don't have other resources that we have. So you can see a culture shift, and I do believe that if we continue on, on this trajectory, people will come back. But they, but we need to give them something to come back to. So I just, I thank you for the work you're doing out there. I don't know where you're at. You're somewhere having, relaxing and, or now you're working. But thank you over there and thank you as well here.
I think we have to really publicize what we have during Latimer with what's happening at Madison. We hear it here in this small area on Channel 16, but do we see it elsewhere? Do we see what's happening? And we talk about pathways in great neighborhood schools, but are we publicizing them? And my kids are all grown up and I have grandkids now, so now I worry about my grandkids. But are we letting parents know what we do and what we do well? Are we showcasing what we do and what we do well? And are we really reaching out and understanding what our parents want? So I will thank you all for the opportunity and I will leave you with that unless you have more questions.
Well, thank you. I mean, that's, goes to what the board asked Superintendent Gall a couple of months later to come up with a marketing plan. So he's going to come up with a marketing plan on how to market our district, and that goes to the root of the issue that you were talking about. And Director Nelson also made a, in her board member report, mentioned about the board letter that went out. It's an opportunity for community to know what is happening in our district by reading that board letter. It may be a little bit long in length, but it's got some great information. And we are promoting programs in schools through, through that board letter. And that was something that started about six or seven months, eight, 10 months now, after the board transition. So we are doing everything possible to communicate with our community, but that message is well-received. Thank you.
Thank you.
And...
That concludes my report.
Yeah.
So much for my three minutes, Director Rock.
And thank you for bringing the students up here, taking over your seat and giving a shout-out to those teachers. That was good to see. And I'm always glad somebody is recognizing Mark Miller. He is always there. I've come sometimes early in the morning, I've come late in the nights. I think he's got a cart out here somewhere in the back. He must be, he's just out there at the parking lot all the time, cleaning up the parking lot, making it look good, so. Yeah. Due recognition that was well deserved. Moving on to consent items, Director Daniels, can you please make the motion to adopt the consent items? Yeah, there you go.
I move that the Board of Education adopt all consent items as designated in the agenda. The consent items are C2, approval of October 12, 2022 regular meeting minutes. C3, approval of personnel recommendations for October 26, 2022. C4, approval of district personnel performance evaluation, advisory council, membership and charge. C5, approval of fiscal year 2022, 2023 DAC membership and charge. C6, approval of DAC accreditation subcommittee membership and charge. C7, approval of DAC budget subcommittee membership and charge. C8, approval of male levy override oversight committee, membership and charge.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Marcella, roll call, please.
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the consent items have been adopted. Moving on to action items, there are no contract awards or budget transfers. Director Loma, can you please make the motion for action item D3?
I move that the Board of Education approve the FY 2022-23 membership recommendations and annual charge of the Benefits Insurance Committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This was an item that we discussed a couple of weeks back at the previous board meeting as non-action. Couple of requests was made by the board. Superintendent Gall, do you have anything new information to add on this?
Yeah, Jessica, Chris, come forward.
Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent Gall. I'm coming back to you as a representative of the Benefits Insurance Committee to bring forward the revised annual charge and membership for board approval. I've included four attachments in your board packet this evening. The first two attachments are the annual charge, one is redlined, and the other is the clean version. And the second two attachments are the Insurance Committee membership, redlined, and the clean version. On the annual charge, we have added 1B, which notes the RFP that we discussed in the last board meeting. And then on the membership, we did add one executive professional representative to fill our vacancy and have noted that there is one teacher vacancy available. We have sent out an email to all of the teachers requesting applications, so the review of those applications is currently in process. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Board members, any feedback or questions on that? Thank you for doing that work and bringing it back to us.
Director Schott and I are scheduled, hopefully tomorrow. He's made himself available tomorrow to review those applications for the teacher position.
So we have received some applications?
We do. We have four, I think that's correct.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So hopefully you'll find a qualified candidate to serve on that committee. The charge that's been added, the RFP, is that something that you intend to complete by the end of this year, '22?
Yes.
Okay. And then you can...
And then we will bring that forward to the board in March.
Thank you. Looking at the board, any questions on this before I call for roll call? So just to let the community know, the RFP, we are looking for the best overall value here when we put out an RFP in terms of the overall product quality, the experience with the company. I know Ms. Odom can talk about that, how we, they compete with comparable businesses. But over and above all, in this case, the benefits packet that offers the best coverage for our staff in terms of cost and healthcare. And it's always good to compete and find out who that is going to be in that regard, so. Thank you. Roll call, please, Marcella.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the item number D3, which is the membership recommendations and the annual charge for the Benefits Insurance Committee, has been adopted by the board. Pressured and Nelson, can you please make the motion for action item D4?
I move that the Board of Education approve Resolution 2023-9, Family and Medical Leave Insurance Program, opting out of participating in this program to avoid unnecessary duplicative insurance.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. So this was an item that was discussed at last week's work session. Are there any additional thoughts that board members want to add to this conversation at this point in time before I call for roll call?
I'll just share that, or reiterate from last week's work session that employees still have an opportunity to pursue this program if they would like to, on their own.
Yeah, it was also communicated to us that the employee groups were approached and asked for feedback, and the feedback that we received from employee groups was to choose this option. And 99. whatever, 9% of the school districts in Colorado are picking this option. And the one or two school districts that haven't have just not done it, and maybe we are one of the schools that are doing it finally. So this is something that we are thoughtfully had that conversation at that last work session and came to this, came to this decision, so. With that, Marcella, roll call, please. I didn't see your thing. Director Loma?
Yes, note is to opt out. I just want to make sure, to be clear for everybody understands.
Yes, the resolution is opting out.
Well, I know, I know that. I'm just making sure everybody understands that.
Roll call, please, Marcella.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
No.
The ayes have it, the resolution has been adopted. Director Ott, can you please read the resolution for the Native American Heritage Month and make a motion?
Yes, Resolution 2023-08. Whereas from November 1st, 2022 through November 30th, 2022, the United States celebrates National Native American Heritage Month as a time to recognize the vibrant heritage, history, art, traditions, and contributions of the first Americans to the history and culture of the United States. Whereas Native Americans are descendants of the original indigenous inhabitants of what is now the United States and have moving stories of triumph and perseverance to share with future generations. Whereas we recognize that District 11 is located on the traditional homelands of the Ute, the Apache, Arapaho, Cheyenne, and Comanche nations, and that their influence continues all around us. Whereas Native Americans have made and continue to make distinct and important contributions to the United States and the rest of the world in many fields, including the fields of agriculture, medicine, music, language, art, governance, and the military. And Native Americans have distinguished themselves as inventors, entrepreneurs, spiritual leaders, and scholars. Whereas District 11 desires to honor the presence of over 1,200 Native American students and staff, representing over 100 different tribes. And whereas our Native American students, families, staff, and community have made numerous contributions to District 11. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Board of Education of Colorado Springs District 11, do hereby proclaim that November 1st, 2022 through November 30th, 2022, be declared Native American Heritage Month in School District 11. I move that the Board of Education endorse Resolution 2023-8, recognizing November as Native American Heritage Month.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any thoughts or comments?
Well, I will note real quick, as I walked through schools over the last couple of weeks, it was really neat to see the honors for Hispanic Heritage Month and some of the artwork that had been done and additional expressions of Hispanic Heritage Month. So I hope that... So I hope that folks will also take Native American Heritage Month and do the same kind of honors, especially since we are, since we're on the land of these indigenous peoples. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Loma?
Yeah, I am, I have a weird upbringing, you can probably tell by who I am, but all my life, I was raised up in a Hispanic neighborhood, being half Hispanic, Mexican-American. And I never understood my real heritage. I didn't find out until I was probably forty-five that I was a native. And I found out by accident, my brother was crying one day. And I said, what's wrong with you, Rick? He goes, oh, I wish I spent more time with my grandpa, he's going through really emotional time. And I go, why, what's up? He goes, I would have found out, we could have found out more about who we are. And I go, I go, excuse me, what are you talking about? He goes, well, we're, we're Native Americans. And I go, hold, hold up, wait, what did you just say? He goes, we're native. I go, well, when were you guys gonna tell me? He goes, we thought you knew. And so I looked at him like, in a moment, I went from being a Mexican-American to a Native American within a minute, I didn't believe him. I said, oh, no, this guy's, you know, my brother's smoking too much dope or something, he's tripping. And I looked at him, I go, okay. So I came home, I didn't believe a word he said, and I got, you know, I spit in the tube, you know, what are you talking about? Send it in, and it comes back, and my blood quantum is fifty-three percent indigenous. And I started cracking up. My wife, my wife said, what's wrong with you? I go, you know, I've always had an affinity towards Native American art, I got, I got, you name it, I got knives and artwork and pictures. I've always had that in my, in my growing up, and I never knew I was a native till late in life, which blew me away. And so, so I have the quantum, the difficult task though for natives, and I found out why now, politics is everywhere. Even though you have the quantum, you get no benefit from it unless you are on a registry. Well, if you know anything about Native American registries, most of them have been destroyed. And on purpose, because without the registry, you don't get any money. So even though your quantum is, so my quantum is fifty-three percent, if you can't find your registry name, an uncle, an aunt, or something, they don't give you a penny. So, and they said, aren't you mad? I go, well, I'd done all right without the help, and it doesn't really bother me. But that's my story, how I found out I was a Blackfoot Indian. And so now, my mother is, you know, Spanish, Montalvo, from España. But my father, my grandfather are native, and so it was, it was an interesting little story I thought I'd share. So I joke with everybody, I went from an essay, essay, right? Hey, what's up, essay? I went from an essay to a how, in like one second, amen? So here I am, God bless you, all right? Go ahead.
Thank you, any other thoughts or comments? Roll call, please, Marcella.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Mel Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the resolution celebrating Native American Heritage Month has been adopted. And as Director Ott said, hopefully all our schools and our students get to learn about the contribution of Native Americans and celebrate that at our schools. And we look forward to visiting our schools and seeing those wonderful events take place over the next month. Moving on to non-action item, Board Policy Committee Charge. So this was an item that we discussed at the work session last week when Dr. X came and presented his ideas on the policy work that's going to unfold over the next few months. And the board provided some feedback to him. And now we have the Board Policy Charge itself, along with that membership coming in front of the board for this is non-action, so two weeks later it'll come as action. And I'm going to turn it over to, turn it over to Superintendent Gall for additional information.
Dr. X?
Yeah, this is just a charge for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. It will look very similar to last year with the addition of a new community member that the Policy Committee did vote on for Friday.
Okay.
And if I may, thank you for moving me up one in the agenda.
We are trying, we are aiming to please, so. Somebody's got to be last, so it's not because, we just want to keep you here a little bit longer, so that's all. So you can spend more time with us, so. Board members, any thoughts or comments on this board? Director Ott?
Thank you. I didn't see in the minutes where you voted on that, so, but I possibly could have missed them in the Policy Committee Minutes, because I skimmed them.
We haven't finished the minutes from Friday's meeting, this past Friday's meeting, we're still putting those together.
Oh, okay, then I must have read the earlier ones, and that would not be something that would be in them then, obviously. Thank you. I did note that, again, as I noted in the work session, the committee is not very diverse. And so you have two community members from the same demographic, I would say. So I hope you will continue to look on how you can expand the diversity of your committee. And if that needs to come back before the board, I would encourage you to do so, because right now I think you're getting a very limited, well, I referenced life experiences last time, and I don't think you're getting as many diverse life experiences reflected in your committee as you could. Thank you. But I do appreciate what you're doing over there and the work that you're expanding into and looking at all of the possibilities of updating policies and especially covering the legalities that we must. Thank you.
Thank you, any other thoughts or comments on this? Thumbs up to move to consent? Okay, I have four thumbs up, so this will move to consent. With that, the Unified Improvement Plan, and we have two schools today. And again, these are two new schools that are coming in front of the board to provide their school improvement plan based on their school performance framework for the last year. And this item is new information, Superintendent Gall. Just to, as a refreshment, refresh, to refresh our communities on this, the board is listening to those Unified Improvement Plan as non-action, but we are going to collectively vote on it at a later point in time in December. So I would need a motion to pass this coming, yeah, coming back at a later table that item till a later point in time. With that, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, President Mel Packham and the board, and then to our community. This is the crux of why we're all here tonight, is to discuss what we're going to do as the Colorado Springs School District eleven to turn around our priority schools. And so this is an ongoing theme, we have seventeen of these to get through through the course of this fall. I appreciate everybody coming here. I really want to call out and shout out the staff. We continue to seek to improve the way that we are presenting our information, that it be clear, it be concise, it be actionable, and that it actually does lead to turnaround. I want to really thank Darren for his work over the last two weeks and the time that we've gone through this as an executive cabinet team and refining how we do our storytelling. So the numbers and the data that we share tell you the reality of what is happening in the school. There is no attempt to hide any facts here. We acknowledge the fact that we have schools that need extra supports and better strategies in order to deliver for all students. And so that's what we hope that you'll see tonight. I want to thank Felicia and Lisa for their hard work and their teams and the fact that they are here to be able to present that work. Darren, floor is yours.
Thank you to our board and Superintendent Gall. Before I turn it over to our principals, the one thing that I want to make sure that you hear me say is that great schools run towards accountability, not from it. And that's one thing that you're going to hear from our principals this evening, is the acknowledgement of where we're at, but also not hope, but a specific plan to make sure that we're not in front of you with this presentation next year. But instead, we're coming to you with highlights and spotlights of the great successes and lessons learned from this school year, okay? So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to
Over to Tracy, because it's not
Tracy Squires.
From Fremont.
At Fremont.
She was so kind to allow me to join her at her school and do a kindergarten reading a couple of weeks ago, Tracy, my apologies.
Superintendent Gall, you got me at the beginning of the meeting, so I had to get you back.
Or even though.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, as you get forward, I just want to brief this one slide for everybody on the board. Melissa Olson, Executive Assistant for John McCarron's team in IT, has heard us talking about priority schools being a priority. And so on her own, she took the initiative to take the map, and if you remember the map, this is how we introduced area superintendents. And she laid over on this map on her own initiative, the priority schools for, that are our attention this year. And so now in IT, when a phone, when the phone rings and it's somebody from Fremont, they get extra attention. Now, that doesn't mean that somebody gets less attention. We're not stealing from Peter to pay for Paul. The equity in the system is, is if we want to be successful, we take care of these schools first and foremost, give them the resources that we need. I promise you, if your name is not on this list, you're still going to get the service that you need. Thank you, Tracy.
Good evening, board and Superintendent Gall. My name is Tracy Squires, and I am in my fifth year as principal at Fremont Elementary School. And I really appreciate the opportunity this evening to talk to you about how Fremont is going to move off of priority improvement and back to performance. So when I, when we look at our data, we start with our five essentials. And the first thing that I notice is that effective leaders did go back to orange last year. And that is me and my leadership teams. And digging deeper into the measures within that essential, instructional leadership is one of the measures that has questions about teachers receiving productive and useful feedback throughout the year on a consistent basis from the principal. And while seventy-six percent of my staff did agree or strongly agree with that, it should be a hundred percent. I need to be able to give more effective feedback to one hundred percent of my staff. And I do want to shout out to Tanya Nash and the Office of Educator Effectiveness. This year, they have implemented or created a coaching conference forum. And it has really helped me narrow the focus and highlight strengths and opportunities for teachers as I'm holding those post-observation meetings with them. The next thing I look at is that collaborative teachers went back to the red last year. And the, one of the measures within that is teacher-to-teacher trust. We scored extremely low on that. We do have some plans in place in my one plan that I will share in a bit. I do want to highlight also that I do have about a third of my teaching staff is new to Fremont this year. I have a new teacher at every grade level, pre-K through fifth grade. I have two new first-grade teachers, and I do have a new music teacher as well. We are excited about our supportive environment, essential, maintain in the green. And we are excited that our involved families did go up from orange to yellow over the last two years, and then it has stayed yellow. We are working to get that to, back to green. Within that, that essential is, there's three measures. Involved families, which, which, these are teacher responses. So we have, that was rated as strong. And then we had parent involvement, which was rated as neutral. And then teacher-to-parent trust is weak. So we do have some things, you know, we have parent-teacher conferences tonight and all day tomorrow. And our teachers, we really worked hard to get a hundred percent of our families into the building. We did, we are, we are really close up there, and the ninety, I think about ninety percent right now, we're still working on getting some more in, you know, for tomorrow and making, we're still making phone calls and trying to build those trusting relationships between teachers and parents. And we are excited about our ambitious instruction, moving up to yellow. And those are, within those, there's four measures. Three of those are answered by students, and one measure of, is answered by teachers. And that's the quality of student discussion, and that was a weak area, so we do have a plan for that as well. And we move on to our district benchmark data. Percent of students who met or exceeded growth, expected growth in third to fifth grade. And so obviously, there was a significant decrease in math, fifteen percent decrease from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two, which is unacceptable, and a seven percent decrease in language arts as well. For our early readers, our kindergarten, first, and second grade, we do use Acadia's reading. And while we would expect increases from the beginning to the end of the year, I would like those to be higher. And, you know, we enjoy those gains. But the foundational skills of learning to read are not necessarily transferring over to reading to learn for our third, fourth, and fifth graders. Looking at our CMAS results, only one-third of our students are at or above grade level expectations. And we are in the thirty-fifth percentile in the state, and again, unacceptable data. Math is, we did have a twelve percent increase from last year to, or from two years ago to last year. But again, we're only, only a third of our students are meeting grade level expectations, and we are in the forty-fourth percentile. Our school performance framework, we are at thirty-five point three. We, that is not lost, we're only one point four above turnaround. I did show this to my staff. We own the data, it is not acceptable, and we can, we can do better. We are committed to moving off of priority improvement status. So our priority performance challenge is pretty clear. Our students are not meeting expectations for growth and achievement in ELA or math. So at Fremont, our North Star is relationships. We know that no significant learning can take place without a significant relationship. And so we know that students need to be known and seen and heard, and that they need to have trusting student-to-teacher relationships, knowing that adults care for them before they can demonstrate growth and achievement. So our major improvement strategy, one, tied to best first instruction for learning. Our root cause, we felt like our, in working with our, I have an empower core team who attended the symposium last year. And we felt like our PLC structure was not being intended or followed as intended. We felt that too much of the time was being used by housekeeping items and nuts and bolts, planning field trips and that kind of thing. So, and then to follow that, intentional planning for tier-one instruction is lacking a focus on learning. It was more on planning for teaching instead of planning for learning. So our action steps. Last summer, I did attend a conference, Solution Tree, PLCs at Work, and brought back some great resources. So we have narrowed the focus on our PLC time. And we are, the notes that the teachers take during the PLC is very, very focused on the four questions of an effective PLC. What do we want students to know and be able to do? How are we going to know if they know it? What are we going to do if they do? What are we going to do if they don't know it? So it's very focused, and I'd like to thank, so our area instructional coach, Jamie Elkins-Green, has been coming out to Fremont to attend not only our PLCs, but she's doing, she's been doing Learning Wox. And so she's, she's really been a great help to me. My TLC in-house, also, we all attend the PLCs, which we have twice a month on Wednesdays after school. And so it's very focused. We're, of course, looking at assessment data and driving our instruction around that. We are participating in the BFI Schoology model for, we did the standards literacy module. We collaborated with our staff at various staff meetings and PD days. We also worked with King and collaborated with King Elementary, where Jamie Elkins-Green facilitated some of those modules as well. And again, I mentioned that observation, coaching, and feedback form, which has been so helpful. I am, my team, I have three teachers, my TLC and myself, we are a part of the Kagan cohort this year. So we've been attending those trainings, and then we come back. So we've been attending those trainings, and then we come back and we teach and model those structures at staff meetings. And we have provided lots of resources for teachers as well. And they are expected to bring documentation of trying different Kagan structures to their mid-year review meeting with me in January. So we'll follow up with them on that, and we continue to see those great structures in the classrooms as, as they're being taught. Teachers also have an opportunity to observe other teachers, whether it's at Fremont or another school. So we have sent teachers out to other schools to observe with specific look-for's. And we continue to secure, to secure substitutes so we can provide that coverage so that teachers can go observe the other great things that are happening and learn from each other. We are excited that our counselor and her intern are providing some additional team plan time for our grade levels. So they're teaching the random acts of kindness, the social-emotional lessons, to the grade-level teams so that, for example, going, going in and teaching all three third-grade classes, this, the, we use Random Acts of Kindness curriculum. And so they're teaching that so that all students are hearing the same message. It gives the teachers then a little bit of extra time to go and, and take care of those housekeeping items, those nuts and bolts, planning the field trips and what, whatnot, so that they're not using the PLC in time to do that. And then they're following up with the, the social-emotional message for the week. They continue to, to incorporate that into their lessons throughout the week. And our one-plan review, we did have Tanya Nash, we had Chad Melina, Don L. Potter, Darren Joyner, Jamie Elkins-Green, and my team. We did our review with the one-plan about two or three weeks ago. I thought that was very effective. I felt it was very safe. We got a lot of great feedback, and we will implement that. And my team in-house also continues to review the one-plan each month. We are doing student monitoring of data, so we are trying to help students take ownership of their data. So I've gone into second, third, fourth, and fifth grade classrooms, and we give students their STAR beginning-of-year reading and math data and try to help them understand it. We talk about percentile rank, and they kind of highlight that. And then we look at also the, the test duration. We found that, that we really want to help kids persevere and make sure they're really, you know, continuing that effort. So we're, we're having them like, hey, how long did it take you to take the test? And so talking to them about, you know, the time that they're taking, make sure you're reading all the tests and taking your time and doing your very best all the time. And our second major improvement strategy is around culture of trust. Our root cause, some staff do not follow the social contract in the way we agreed to treat one another. Again, that did go from orange, or from orange to red from, you know, two years ago to last year. And that teacher-to-teacher trust was very weak. So our action steps. We are using the CKH processes to, so on the first day of school, back, I think it was August 10th, all certified staff and all ESP were required to attend our, our back-to-school meeting. And we did create our social contract using the CKH process that teachers use with students to build their social contracts. It's then displayed in the main hall. And then at every staff meeting, I bring it in, we review it, this is how we agree to treat one another. And then we are asking them to anonymously rate how we are doing in treating one another. So I'm happy to say that at our October staff meeting, on a scale of one to five, five being we're doing pretty well, we scored a 4.4. We do have opportunities to build trust in at monthly small group meetings. So that's just a mixture of about 12 staff members. We have five, five small group teams, and they have about 12 people on them, cross-section of all areas. And it's just a time to get to know each other, and we, we give them a topic to discuss, discuss, just a way to build connections and to get to know each other and to learn about each other's strengths so that we can highlight those and learn from each other. Collective responsibility is a Fremont focus. We do have five committees. So staff that are 8.8 or up are required to be on a committee. We have a community outreach committee that has done lots of wonderful things. One thing we're doing coming up is after we honor our veterans in-house on November 11th, our community outreach committee secured a coffee truck. So then the veterans will go out and enjoy a coffee and a donut. And we have a beautification committee that has painted beautiful murals on the back of our portable and in our restrooms. We have a, the social committee that plans a lot of the social events on a quarterly basis at least. And we have a social-emotional learning committee. So they're kind of in charge of the Random Acts of Kindness and the Capturing Kids' Hearts piece. And then we have a challenge committee, and they put on school-wide challenges, like attendance challenges and so forth. So it's very, it's a lot of responsibility. Everybody's got a hand in, in helping out with something. And then we have the name of every student at Fremont and every staff member at Fremont. We have their names on an index card, and they are posted in our lounge. And just helping staff think about their, their sphere of influence and the relationships that they have with students. And they are going to be placing stickers, they have a specific sticker assigned to them. They're going to be placing stickers on the name, all the student cards and all the staff members' cards, who they feel like they have a positive trusting relationship with. And the goal is to fill up those index cards and to make sure that if we see some that don't have many stickers, that we're trying to build those relationships with, whether it's a student member or a staff member. And our theme this year is Fresh Start. So every day, we start with a Fresh Start quote. We had T-shirts, "It's a great day for a fresh start again." And we know that we have to give each other a fresh start every day as adults. We know we have to give students fresh starts multiple times a day. And so we do really own that, that fresh start. And it's kind of the COVID, you know, we're over that, we're done with that. So we're starting fresh from COVID this year. We have a relatively new staff. So we're very energized, and we are very committed to moving off priority improvement. And next year, we'll be celebrating our successes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll start by thanking you first of all. Do you have any of your staff members here, by the way? I just want to acknowledge them if they are.
I don't because they were teacher conferences.
Teacher, yeah. Yeah, they've got something better to do that is engaged, so understandable.
Actually, hopefully, they're on their way home by now, but.
So I, I know that these are tough conversations to have. And, you know, for the board to provide some feedback and also the principals to come and talk about some of the challenges that you faced over the last, these are tough conversations. So the feedback that the board provides is constructive feedback that we can hope that your school can come back next year as a celebration, and we can celebrate you. So I want you to take that in that spirit.
Thank you.
And also, I'll go back to that original chart that was posted up there, and you talked about how they were divided by quadrants. Just to let our community know, we are not hiding anything out there. We had four schools in priority improvement or turnaround pre-COVID. Now, we went through COVID, and we had remote learning and hybrid learning. And now we are, what it says on the chart, 17 schools in priority improvement or turnaround. What that means to me is that we didn't do right by our students during those remote or hybrid learning. It was not effective learning. Our students, especially our economically disadvantaged students struggled during that time. And that data reflects that out there. So, and we tie it back to what we were talking at the beginning of the meeting, to the capacity committee report and declining enrollment. And invariably, our parents are choosing to walk away from schools that are not, that are struggling. And that's what that capacity committee, hard facts tell us. So we have to change this around, and you are in year zero. And I'm talking this to other principals that come here too. I'm just saying this, this is year zero. You have an opportunity right now, like what you said, to come, come away from priority improvement to improvement or performance out there, there is a possibility. If you come back next year, then you are caught in that state clock. And then getting out of that state clock is a lot more difficult than trying to change it right now. So with that, I will, I do have some questions, but I will first turn to the board and see if they had any thoughts or questions. Director Loma.
Just for community understanding, can you give me the percentages of turnaround, where they lie, priority, improvement, improvement in performance, just?
Dr. Kalaki, would you be able to provide that information? I think he's asking for the thresholds.
Yeah, of each one, just so that we have it and so people understand where we're at before I ask my question, like, to make, to be in priority improvement, what is your percentage level? So you, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Lisa.
And just.
So turnaround, are you asking about point, cut points?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So turnaround is 0 to 33.9.
Yeah.
Priority improvement is 34 to 41.9. Improvement is 42 to 52.9, and performance is 53% and higher.
Okay, now, and not, not, I just, how do I say this? Because I'm not trying to pick on anybody, because I know, being a principal, public education is a tough gig. Been there, done that. But I, I just want us to understand the, the quagmire dilemma that not just this district, the country is in. And this is all a result of No Child Left Behind, where at that point, all the performance measures were lowered so that the schools wouldn't look as bad. Why do I say that? When you can say that a school at 53 is in performance, you can't graduate a college course with that grade. And see, that's where public education is. You know, you would think it would be performance, A or B, and then, and drop. But that's, and that's not your fault. I'm just making this point so that everybody understands. That's how low the highest standard has become. That's our problem. So even though, and I pray, and I believe you, I believe because your heart's in it, that you will reach performance. But in my book, 53 is not performing. It'll get you out of this, but let's be honest. So I, I, I believe in, let's shoot higher than that. And I, and I know we can. So that, that's my first takeaway. Then you mentioned you have, how many new teachers?
I have one in every grade level. So I have K through five, that's six, and I have an extra one at first grade, that's seven, and pre-K, that's eight, and a music teacher, that's nine.
Nine, and how many total teachers?
So I have three sections of every grade level, so I have 18, K-5.
18, that's, so half of your teachers roughly are new, is that what you're telling me?
Yeah.
Which is good. I'm not, so my question is, because that'll help your culture of trust for sure. But I, I like to have a breakdown. How many new hires, just from my own understanding, as I look next year? How many transfers? And how many you fired?
So new hires, meaning to Fremont or to the district?
Yeah, to, to the district, new to our, to teaching perhaps, do you know that?
I have one that's brand-new to teaching. She is on an alternative licensure program, and she is going through BOSIs.
Nice.
So she's brand-new, and she has no education, she's going through the classes right now.
Yeah, good.
But she's, she's doing, she's coming along nicely. She's, I'm very impressed. I've observed her, I've been in her class many times, done a formal, formal observation. I have, I hired some teachers from Texas that have experience.
Oh, good.
A couple, my music teacher and the other first-grade teacher. Let's see. My second-grade teacher has had intervention experience in the district, but it's her first classroom. Pre-K, same thing, she has been an interventionist, and she's now a pre-K teacher. My kinder teacher is another alternative licensure candidate. And I have a new fifth-grade teacher that was at a charter school in D-11 and moved over to Fremont. And I did have a fourth-grade teacher that I hired that left after two weeks. So I am still, we are still trying to fill her position.
Yeah.
We are currently making it work, and my TLC has been teaching reading to those students. We want to make sure they have good, solid reading instruction. And we, my, one of the interventionists is teaching math. And then another interventionist is teaching the science and social studies piece to that group so that they have three different teachers, but it's consistent every day.
Good. So did, did you happen to fire anybody in your tenure there, since you've been there?
I, I have, I have released people, I have, you know, not renewed them, if that's what you're asking, yes.
Yeah, I was, I was curious. I'm curious because, you know, when you talk about trust, there's a great book about trust. General Simciski, he wrote a book called Be No Do. And he said, when, when there's no trust, leadership ceases to exist. It's just over, it's done. And, and so it's pretty evident that whoever, when you did this report and looked at the issues, that trust was the issue. That's, that's, that's probably the toughest obstacle to overcome, trust. I don't want to give you more work, but Dr. Kevin Lehman wrote a book. It's a short book, it's probably the best book I know, and Leadership Would Be Good For You And Your Principals. It's called The Way of the Shepherd, Dr. Kevin Lehman. And that, I think that would be a great help to help your leadership. Not, not the teacher so much, but, but your leadership. You don't have to, I'm just throwing that out because I like to talk too much, I guess, I don't know. And then I just want to underscore this. And I think part, kind of scratched the surface. We, we need to understand, it was the policies, not the pandemic, of the previous board, previous superintendent, and the current union that caused this problem. And that, that's understood. I have kids in other schools that never shut down. They did another, they followed another policy. So you're owning it as a principal, and so, and those other sections of our, of our community, of our educational organization need to own it as well. So, so that's not just you. It was those, those entities that dumped it on your lap. And, and I understand that, so you, so you, no, how am I saying? You, so you shouldn't take the fall. You just keep doing what you're doing, do the best you can, and I will support you as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Nelson.
I just want to echo, I, we want to support you. And thank you for coming up here and presenting some very hard information to us and owning it. I appreciate that you recognize the challenge ahead of you, and I sense a desire for improvement, and that means all, all, means so much. But I'll just steal from Mr. Gall, he likes to say, where there's will, we can provide the skill. And I sense that. And so I hope that your, rest of your team has that as well, so.
Thank you.
Wish you the best of luck, and please let us know how we can support. One quick question, can, I don't know if, maybe it's for you, Mr. Joyner. Can you remind me which of your schools is getting that extra wraparound services? Is it Carver, Fremont, is there another one?
Yes, I think Fremont is one of the schools. Maybe you can talk about that a little bit. That was going to be one of my questions.
Sure.
When is that happening? Some details about that.
Right, so after, you know, we did the one-plan review as a team, and they, they were very supportive in that. And then I have Paul Bungee coming out to do learning walks. He's on the books, so he'll be doing learning walks. And then Jamie Elkins-Green is coming. She's going to be on, coming every Monday and Tuesday. She was out there yesterday. We walked and did a few classrooms yesterday. So, and then Don L. Potter is also, I've, he's been helpful with, for me. I'm kind of using him as a, as a bit of a coach, if you will. So we're going in to observe together, and he, we kind of just debrief afterwards. Are we seeing the same thing after an observation? Darren has been a super big support. I really am appreciative of him. And so I just feel, I do feel the wraparound support from the district. Thank you. I want to also let you know.
Thank you. I think we are talking about something else, but Superintendent Gall said that that has not been communicated to the schools yet, so you may not be aware of something that happened at the.
Yeah, so we have determined which schools we would like to provide the wraparound services for with the help of Tamara. We're in discussions with those contract services. We haven't engaged that down to the building level yet until we actually have approval through the contract, which will come to the board at a future date.
Okay.
But yes.
Thank you.
At some point in time.
Exciting.
Yeah.
I'll just jump in really quick. I need to apologize, I have to step out again early. Life happens, you know, sick kids. And so I will continue to listen and be engaged, but I apologize, I'm going to miss the next one. I will be listening, though, and I will ask questions, but just not in person. So I'm sorry to everyone that now I have to step away.
I just want to let you know that the Fremont fifth graders are all signed up for Starbase.
Awesome.
All three classes are.
Yay.
First time, so very, one of my new teachers brought that to my attention. And so she got it on the books for us.
Great, let us know when they go, or at least me, because Fremont's one of my schools for. Great, let us know when they go, or at least me, because Fremont's one of my schools for touring, so.
Great.
Yeah, let me know when they're going.
Okay.
Maybe I can join.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Nelson, and if you want to ask questions, let me know as you are, yeah, and then I'll call your name out. Director Art.
Thank you, I find it ironic that the last board, the last superintendent and et cetera, et cetera are. Our policies are accused of the downturn for your school and others when we have had others. Successful schools, but we've also seen a downturn across the country, but maybe we had that much power, I just, I just have to comment on that irony there. So we haven't seen UIPs, as you know, and I found that the slides very informative and much easier to read, certainly than a UIP. But we didn't see the one plan either, so I'm curious how your one plan might have changed since the symposium? And if your goals there are still reflected here, because then I assume you have may have had. Support also from your SAC and or do you have support on this current version from your school accountability committee?
Yes, yeah, so we did come up with the two major improvement strategies at the symposium. And then we've kind of just, you know, refined them and added action steps and we're, you know, constantly monitoring that and uploading evidence. My SAC, I do have a very active SAC, I have eight solid members. Every month and then, you know, they stay for PTA also, so lots, great, great group of people that are behind me and behind the school and and the Fremont students. And we also had a trunk retreat on Saturday put on by our PTA. But so yeah, our SAC is very involved and they're very supportive of the major improvement strategies in the one plan. And they have, they have a chance to give input.
All right, thank you, I, we know engaged parents make all that difference there and involve families. And eight sounds like so few, but I know it's a lot for an elementary school, so just, you know, heads up to anyone, any parent who wants to be engaged and community members as well, right? Because we have to have that community voice. But thank you for including them and working with them as part of your plan.
You're welcome, thank you.
I'm going to add one more thing, I appreciate seeing the beginning of year and end of year differences and it's obviously, obviously you're making a difference. So I just, I'm right here with the others as far as go team, you know, go Fremont for making that difference and expanding that even more. Thank you.
Director Daniels.
Yeah, thank you, um, thank you for the report. And I know we talked about having peer coaching, teacher to teacher coaching last week in the work session. And I wasn't really sure how that looked for your community at Fremont. And I know prior, we were also looking at Fremont as being one of our magnet schools, right? So I know we're not that far off because you were identified for that, but wanted to know more about. If if we're having collaboration centered around having peer coaching, having the PLC work that we've been discussing, like what does that look like? And how did we get to that? Because I thought for sure we were in a different spot for Fremont.
So for, there are some teachers that use teachers coaching teachers, I'm not sure if you're referring to that or not.
Yes, yes, Mrs. Nash spoke about it at the work session and we know that that is a very successful program. So I was wondering what it looks like for Fremont, how are we, do we need more FTEs for that to help wrap around or?
We'll always take more FTE, but.
I know, right, we will, because we're all in need of it, but I I'm I'm just like, it just seems like something isn't when we were looking at you guys for a magnet school.
So we are a magnet, we are gifted magnet school.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, like, how how did, how did we get here?
So we do have.
If you can add on that, what Director Daniels is talking about, you are a gifted magnet program and you did not mention any of that in the presentation that you have. How many gifted magnet students do you have? And normally as a parent, if you have a gifted magnet school, I would associate that with higher achievement. Because these are the students that perform well, so where is the disconnect there that though you have this gifted magnet program there?
I do, yes.
Yeah, how many students are there?
Sure, and I can give you some some data about, yes, so we have a one section of third, one section of fourth and one section of fifth grade. That students are identified as gifted, so it's it's, you know, it's just like, so Saban has a sixth, seventh and eighth grade gifted magnet program and so. We do have for our third grade, beginning of year star reading data, for example, for third grade. I broke it down into the gifted students, we have ninety two percent of our gifted students that were at or above expectations. And of the gen ed students, we had forty percent of our third graders. So overall, fifty two percent of our third graders, including both gifted and non gifted, are meeting the at or above expectation. And then fourth grade, hundred percent of our fourth grade, we have forty eight students total. We have twelve students in third grade, fourteen students in fourth grade and twenty two students in fifth grade. And so we have one hundred percent of our fourth graders were at or above benchmark on their star reading fall data. Fourth grade general ed, thirty eight percent, and then so combined, it's fifty two percent. And for fifth grade, ninety five percent of our GMP students or gifted students were at or above benchmark, twenty three percent. I do think that some of our fifth graders really did not take the test seriously, so we are working on that with them. Forty seven percent of our fifth graders total met benchmark for the fall star reading. And then looking at math. Third grade, one hundred percent GMP. And fifty one percent of our third grade gen ed students, or excuse me, yeah, fifty one percent and then sixty two percent total met benchmark. Fourth grade, again, a hundred percent of our, we had one student who took the star reading or star math test in seven minutes and scored a hundred percent on it, by the way. So we had one hundred percent of our GMP students, the fourteen students in fourth grade. And twenty nine percent in gen ed, total forty four percent. And in fifth grade, a hundred percent of our GMP, twenty three percent in gen ed and forty eight percent total. So and then when we look at the Cmas data.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, you're going into the data, the more we are looking at like, so you have these gifted magnet students out there and they are performing well, but it's not showing in your state testing data, so where is the disconnect? Is it because your general ed kids are not?
Yeah, we just we just briefed that, the gap between the general education sections and the gifted magnet sections were enormous. And if you look at the inconsistency of how Cmas played out last year, it did present itself where depending upon who was tested from one year to the other, you could really expose. Now, what I really appreciate that Tracy and the team have brought forward is an acknowledgement that they own the challenges at Fremont. And so we discovered this and I really appreciate Tracy, you having the depth in the data, last week at Executive Cabinet, the same disconnect that said we have a gifted magnet, where is that data? And so being able to discuss the data and celebrate the successes for our gifted program students and staff and then yet find that to inform. And so, you know, as as we think about the strategies that we are asking our staffs to to bring to bear. Tracy's acknowledgement that she had PLCs but was not using them as PLCs is the takeaway moment for her this year. The PLCs before, she said, were being filled up with business, if you build it, they will come. If I ask people to come to a meeting, they will come to a meeting, we are driving action, we have gone past observation, we have a clear vision, we are asking our schools to get to action. I was walking the halls with Tracy, she shared with me that her TLC was having to cover a classroom because she was short a teacher, that's real. That happens in District eleven, it happens all across America. And then Tracy and I talked about it and said, that doesn't mean that there's no coaching in the building, that just means we flipped the script. Instead of the coach going to the classroom, how do I take classrooms that are on break to go to the coach? Because the coach now has a model classroom. And so Tracy has challenges to overcome, she's working very hard to build a new culture around best first instruction. And how it is that we develop the relationships with the engagement that she has in order to get there. And just a couple of other items I want to clean up here, we have not walked away from one plan symposiums, we had no intention of doing that, we're just moving faster than the one plan symposium. I am not waiting till June to find out what's wrong with Fremont and what's wrong with Carver, that's what we're discussing today. So we take the information from the one plan and David and his team have done a phenomenal job to arm the area superintendents and a new chief academic officer. To have a way and a methodology to actually bring change into the system. The public education system, whether it's No Child Left Behind or whether it's a union or it's not a union, is stagnated by a very slow data review. And so you heard me talk about Madison earlier, micro levels of urgency, we have the star data, that's very important. Use that to inform what was learned, what was not learned, what was taught, what was not realized in the teaching. And sometimes it's on the teacher, sometimes it's on the student, sometimes it's a combination of both. And then just to this idea, I certainly do not really care for the state's grading formula. Because we are conflating a number with a grade, because we are public education and we all believe that anything below sixty percent is a failure. The SPF has just not worked that way, Director Loma, your points are still valid, that we need to raise the bar and have higher expectations. We should seek for every one of our schools to be distinction with accreditation, not just to be performance. We're never going to accept the minimum, we're going to continue to raise the bar, we're confident that Tracy understands what she needs. You heard other pieces that I really appreciate you using first names because it tells me the personal relationship you have. Jamie is the area instructional coach, that is part of the strategy that we've brought to bear of giving Darren a specific coach for him to go with schools with. Darren doesn't have time to be in classrooms, the amount of time that he needs to be there. He does have time to have Jamie stay afterwards and work with Tracy and her team to be able to deliver on the plan that you see in front of us. Otherwise, we're just going to do what every other district in America does, is report on it, wait a year and report on it again, while families self select their way out. That's that's the change that we're making, we're bringing action to bear. I'd love to be able to move on to Carver, anything else for Tracy?
Thank you for providing some context on the situation that is there, I do have some concerns about Fremont still, okay. The challenges that you were talking about out there where the staff disconnect. The, let me say, where you saying the staff are not following the social contract. And then when I look at the five essential data, it is not moving in the right direction, you got ambitious instruction in the middle, but you've got four supportive areas. And one is effective leadership and collaborative teachers and for three years in a row, that has not moved, the needle hasn't moved, it's kind of dipped and gone by. And I'm assuming that you have addressed those in your school improvement plan over the last three years. What is it that you are doing different this time around that's going to make that difference that you didn't do the last three years?
Well, you're right, we did have a plan, you know, to try to build teacher trust and it did it did go up from year one to year two of the five essentials, but then it went back down last year. And so we're we're trying the different, the reminding of the social con, just constantly, you know, reminding about it, this is how we agreed to treat each other, you know.
So give me an example, what is it that when you say a social contract, teachers are not following?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so for example. One of the, so there's, each group comes up with a word, something that's very important to them on how we treat each other, so it's all about how we treat each other, how they want to be treated by me, how I want to be treated by them, how we treat each other in times of conflict. So one of the things is go to the source, if there is a conflict with a teammate, please go to the source, because that's what we need to do, we're adults, we should be able to resolve things peacefully.
Yep, that answers. So.
Yeah, my visit at Fremont, I signed the social contract, can you remind me of the kindergarten teacher's name?
Ms. Holmes.
Ms. Holmes, she invited me there and you can see the specificity at how Tracy is trying to build a staff this year, yes, she is on the clock, let's be clear. Whether the state has them on the clock or not, Tracy is not a first year principal, she understands the challenges, she came forward with great transparency and humility, we believe that we have the team around to support her. And if we don't, this isn't, you know, I'm not putting Tracy's job on the line, the the will of the board then is that we need to make the changes to ensure that those plans will get us there. Quarterly one plan reviews against the strategies that we have in place, Ms. Knowles, was it again, I'm sorry, I forgot her name.
Holmes.
Holmes, she can teach you how to do head, shoulders, knees and toes against the insect body that includes abdomen, thorax and antenna in a way that even I was able to pick up. Come visit Fremont, see the work that we're doing and then we want to have that discussion of whether or not we think we're going to be able to turn the school around.
Okay, and the last comment I will make on that, I know that in the five essential data, your community engagement piece was in the neutral, if I remember right, when I looked at the five essential data. But there is still opportunities there to engage with the community and I'm glad that you guys are doing the trunk or treat or whatever it is, I would. If it is not specifically called out in your school improvement plan, please do that, community engagement piece, engaging with your community to get community feedback. School accountability committees, the PTAs that are going to provide that support for you too, so.
Okay.
With that, that's all I have for you, so we wish you the best and like I said, the feedback that we are providing you is hopefully going to get you to a better spot. And Superintendent Gall has been in your school and he is watching that you are doing everything that that needs to be done to provide the best possible instruction for our kids, so, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Yep.
Darren, you want to introduce Lisa?
All right, our next principal is Lisa Bezzel from Carver Elementary School.
All right, good evening, President of the Board, Board members and Superintendent Gall, I'm here today for Carver Elementary. I am a first year principal, first time in District eleven, so I will just go through the data that we have. And talk about that in the next steps, the plan of action that we have set up. All right, so if we look at our five essentials, I will be honest, the first time I looked at it, I had printed it out on a colored green piece of paper and didn't realize that there were different colors. When I saw it in color, I didn't realize you could have green. So looking at this, collaborative teachers has been red for the last three years, which as we all know is the foundation of trust and where we need to begin. It is not yet organized for improvement and it is affecting all of the areas around our school for improvement and growth. Our ambitious instruction went up to weak and now we are back, or we are at neutral, I'm sorry, we went from weak to neutral. But our effective leaders, our involved families and supportive environment has remained the same throughout all of this. So the area that we chose to target was our collaborative teachers, our crucial. Teacher to admin trust was at risk, our school commitment was very weak, our collective responsibility very weak and our collaborative practice. And those are all just from the collaborative teachers, which impacts all of the other areas for our five essentials overview. For our district benchmark, it showed that from twenty to twenty one and twenty one to twenty two, we had ten percent fewer students met expected growth on the district benchmark in both ELA and math. So we were realizing that the teachers weren't leaning into each other, they were working independently as silos. And then I'm here to help fix this so that we can lean on each other with, beginning with building that trust. Our Acadians reading is actually for our kindergarten through fifth grade, so these are our averages, if you look at our data, it does show growth. We are an early literacy grant school, so we have received some of those wraparound services and we were able to meet all three of our ELG goals last year. We were able to move fifty percent of our students scoring below benchmark at least one performance category. We are able to make above average progress, moving in the students within the benchmark. And our third goal that the school meant was we made above average progress, moving students out of the well below benchmark. So the students were able to show the growth, but we have to understand that with the Acadians reading, it's the foundation for the early literacy skills for our kindergarten, first and second grade students. It doesn't necessarily translate into CMAS yet, but if we build these strong foundations in K-1, 2, we will see that success and begin closing that gap. So, our next slide is our CMAS data and why we are here today. So, if we're looking at our ELA CMAS proficiency levels, twenty-two percent of Carver students are meeting grade level expectations in ELA, which was down eight percent from the previous year. More than three-fourths of Carver students are below grade level expectations in ELA and our Carver student performance is in the bottom eleven percent of students across the state. Our STAR fall benchmark proficiency levels, we at Carver are testing our second through our fifth grade students. This is the first time that they've taken this online assessment. We have the data here for our third through fifth grade. We know that it is an adaptive test for our students. It's accurate at all grade levels. It has a shorter testing window and we get instant results. And we can also pull parent reports to discuss with parents. We do have national percentile ranking. Currently, we are seventy-three percent of our Carver students started the year below or well below the majority of the students across our country. If we go into our CMAS data for math, we have twelve percent of Carver students are meeting our grade level expectation in math. It was up six percent from the previous year, but eighty-eight percent of Carver students are below grade level expectations in math and our Carver student performance is in the bottom six percent of students across the state. If we go to our STAR fall benchmark for math, if we look at it, we have seventy-nine percent of our Carver students started the year below or well below the majority of students across the nation in math. And the reason that we're here today is, is we are a priority improvement plan. We are at forty points. Forty-two would get us to improvement and fifty-three, we're thirteen points away from being a performance school. In two thousand nineteen, Carver Elementary was a performance school. The last time that they were down was in two thousand sixteen and they were an improvement school back then. I do have teachers that shared that we have been here before and they want the next steps to close that gap and get us back into a performance school. So, our priority performance challenges include, we have low growth and achievement in ELA and math. In response to this priority performance challenge, Carver staff will increase the collaborative practices and the collective responsibility. Collective kind of being the key word. And so, our plan to action. So, we know that our five, I'm going to go back for a moment. We know that our five essential data directly impacts our low growth and achievement across the board. There's no teacher-to-teacher trust, there's limited teacher-to-teacher admin trust, we've had staff turnover, we'll go into it with the MIS strategies, but we are here today so that we can change this. We, I have outlined some of the steps in our MIS strategies of how we're building that and that we can begin as a team to lean in together and we're able to close that gap. So, we will see that increase in our school, back to a performance school. So, we know from the data that our schools, our students, and our staff are in need. So, we're here to support them and it's outlined in the MIS strategies that I'm going to go through. So, in our major improvement strategy, one, this was back in the May Symposium, we selected one phase, one lesson, extend and apply. Our root cause was our student achievement levels have continued to decrease and have been significantly impacted by low attendance, teacher turnover, and behavior challenges. Our enrollment has steadily decreased in the last five years, a drop from three hundred and thirty to two hundred students in the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. One of the things, if you look at the best first instruction, this is phase six, extend and apply. And I did have some conversations with our team of why we selected extend and apply and they were really good with our Wonders reading curriculum and they were doing some of those research inquiry projects, inquiry projects. So, they thought that this would be the next best step. Now, with some of the staff turnover and where our staff is, we have agreed that we are probably going to go back to best and first instruction, phase two, which is our learning targets and our success criteria. So, that's something that we will be embracing starting this year and making sure that it is the standard for next year. So, if we go into our major improvement strategy, one, we have developed three core distributive leadership teams. So, our instructional leadership team is from, we have representation from, starting with our TLC, our interventionist, and we have grade level representation from K-1, 2, 3, 4, 5. So, this team meets monthly and their measures are our STAR data, our Acadians, our Eureka, and then our five essential surveys. So, they're having some of those conversations depending on where we are. And then, they're taking that information back to their teams and then they're reporting out at our building leadership team meeting and then we provide those next steps. One of the other systems that was put into place last year, that was a very effective system that we're using this year, is our win time. So, this is what I need. So, we're taking our Acadians data and we are disaggregating it and separating our students by their need. So, our PLCs, we have K-1, we have 2, 3, and we have 4, 5. So, within that, we have a win time for the two grade levels every day, five days a week for thirty minutes. The people that provide the instruction are our classroom teachers, our interventionist, some of our kinder EAs, our intervention EA. We also have two of our essential teachers, our music and our art teacher are both letters trained and READ Act certified. So, they're also able to provide that small group instruction and we are providing that research-based targeted instruction for the students. The students that are green or blue, that are meeting the standards for reading, they are provided math exemplars with our coach and sometimes with our music teacher depending on that. So, this is one of our non-negotiables that we occur five days a week and the students know their win time. K-1, because when they were first benchmark, very low scores and now they know more, we just recalibrated our groups on Monday and they were rocking and rolling today with new groups and new targets. PDSA is our plan due study act model. This is something that we use for our small groups for reading. We used it last year for our win groups, but this year, the classroom teachers are taking it into their classrooms. It's a ten-day instructional cycle and they group their students according to the data and then they're able to provide that targeted small group instruction, monitor the results, and then have a new learning target. If they have to reteach, it's, it's quick, it's effective. Our professional development opportunities that we've used so far this year are participation and implementation of check-ins around our best first instruction. As the district knows, we have rolled out our Schoology models, modules, and we have completed two. We have strategically grouped our teachers with different staff members so that when they have the completion of the modules, they're having those conversations. So, we may have an art teacher with a kindergarten teacher and an interventionist. So, some of our teachers are out of their comfort level, but they're taking the perspective of all of our staff. We had kind of a round robin where they were able to select on, from Connected, which is part of our Wonders reading curriculum, an online component. Seesaw, which is, it's also aligned to our K through 2 reading curriculum with Wonders, standards-based. Dream Box, which is for Eureka Math. Performance Matters, we had Ashley Byers come out and kind of talk about creating our common formative assessments or our CIA's, common instruction assessments. And then, STAR. So, we kind of had a round robin and the really good thing with this is our Seesaw was presented by one of our kindergarten teachers who is in the BOSI's program, but she was a kindergarten aide last year. And she was able to provide it in small group and the teachers know she is the expert in that. Our Dream Box was presented by a student teacher that we have in fourth grade who used it at her previous school. So, we're using those, empowering some of our own. So, instead of having to trust the leadership, they're trusting each other. So, we're building that strategically. We've also partnered with Paul Bungy and he's coming in and doing some of that math. He did a math presentation and he's also scheduled to do some of those walkthroughs. We are an early literacy grant school. So, an early literacy grant, it's our fourth year in this program and we receive support from a consultant and she comes in once a month. The first month, she took all of our new teachers to the building and all of our, and our interventionists and our TLC and really worked on the PDSA model, trained them. This month, when she came back, she broke it down into the early literacy skills and how to teach those small groups. And it was amazing to see how raw and vulnerable some of the, I have a teacher that returned and she was out of practice for the last five years raising her son. And now that she's back just being open and honest, like, well, I don't know how to do that. What do we do with Alkenine boxes? But they were able to have that collaborative conversations and build trust amongst those new teachers in our building. We also are an empower grant school. So, this means we are receiving a PLC consultant work. So, once a month that we are in a cohort with Brenda Duran, Jamie, our Elkins Green or area TLC is participating in all of our PLCs and it's training us on the correct, the most effective way to run a PLC. We've only targeted kindergarten and first grade this year because only one of the four teachers that were in the grant last year returned. So, we are trying to take the principles that we're learning with that and apply it to all of ours. I also have bi-weekly meetings with our area superintendent Darren and just taking all of that kind of wraparound support and the next best steps for that. Our next major improvement strategy is to collaborate our teacher trust. So, we have a significant staff turnover to include administrators for the past eight school years. There is a need to build a culture of trust as evidenced by a decrease in the collective responsibility as measured by our five essential survey. And there's a lack of trust amongst the staff that directly impacts the communication, the collaborative practices, our collective responsibility, and our school commitment. So, with that, the second committee that we created was the Climate and Culture Committee. They meet at the same time. We have committee meetings, like I said, once a month, but we have three going on simultaneously. Our measure for our Culture and Climate Committee, which includes PBIS, RAC, a Behavior Matrix, Office Referral, anything that you think a Climate and Culture Committee could entail, we add to this committee. It has school-wide expectations for our PLCs. We're working with that. We have the agendas, our PDSA's, our win time groups, all of that are how we're measuring our success. All of our new teachers have a mentor. So, District 11 is phenomenal for providing training and a stipend for teachers that are willing to be a mentor, but we've also assigned our returning teachers to Education A mentors so they have someone to check in with weekly. We are also looking at starting a Marygold program, which is like a once-a-month check-in with our new teachers and making sure their needs are being met so that they are returning next year. Our social-emotional curriculum that we adopted is Random Acts of Kindness. So, we had a cohort of us that attended over the summer and we start every single day with Random Acts of Kindness in every single classroom. So, this social-emotional connection with the student builds those relationships so that the students are successful. Our school counselor has put an excessive amount of time in preparing all of the materials and resources for the teachers. So, they grab the binder, they have the resources, and they teach that. This has proven a decrease in some of our office referrals and just the teachers having those strong relationships with their students. And then, our third major improvement strategy is our parent and community engagement. So, we know that parent involvement levels continue to be low as evidenced by their few parent volunteers, PTA participation, and parent attendance at family nights. So, some of the things we've problem-solved, that language could be a barrier as an intimidation factor, we have COVID-19 fears, and sometimes those work schedules. So, our third committee that we have is our climate, I'm sorry, our Home and Community Partnership Team and they are working on supporting all of this. So, we have our PTA meetings. We still have the same president from last year and some of the same core members. They recently held the Fall Festival last week, great turnout, everybody donated, we haven't, we had enough donated baked goods that every family left with one. So, they have that. We're meeting with them consistently. We have our SAC meetings, which was new. They had not had a consistent school accountability committee. We were able to work with Velvet. She came to our welcome back night and was kind of soliciting parents and talking to them about the benefits. She came to our first SAC meeting and I'm pleased to say that we did announce a SAC chair last week. Yes, last week, I have a parent that agreed to do that. So, we're slow progress. Some of the community events, we make sure that we have interpreters at all events. We are very blessed to have our counselor, our community liaison, and our ELL teacher all speak Spanish. So, they are always fluent, like they are, they were bouncing around at parent-teacher conferences tonight. They have the schedules, they work and collaborate. They are there at all times. A parent pickup, whenever a parent, they'll grab me and they'll interpret for me so that we can have those conversations. We began with a kickoff barbecue back in July, just open to our families and students. I was pleased to say we had a nice turnout and we had, I think, like ninety-five percent of our staff turned out for that barbecue. We had our open house, our meet-the-teacher night. We did do something new this year was Carver World Cafe. So, we invited our families in and we had, it was our Title I presentation. And then, with the World Cafe style is everyone, it was in a group, we had six different groups and five of them, we had interpreters. And they were able to ask questions about Carver. What do they want from Carver and some of those goals and everything? One of our teachers said this was the largest turnout that they'd had in years, as long as she'd been in the building. So, it was wonderful to have that. We've had book fairs and we are planning our STEM and Math Night and our Literacy Night just to bring our families in. One of the things that I brought from my previous school is pancakes with the principal. So, we're nominating students on like the last Friday of the month and they come in a little bit early and they get pancakes with the whole whipped cream and the chocolate syrup and the regular syrup. So, they enjoy that. It's nice to bring the students in and the recognition. We have an ELL teacher that came to our school and she collaborates with our teachers and families like above and beyond. She's invited some of our Spanish-speaking families in to her lessons and she, they are actually learning English with their students. And then, she also is doing one after-school night per week inviting our families in. And she's really focusing on our kindergarten and our first-grade families so that they can be successful in setting up that foundation for their entire educational career. Phenomenal teacher. School-to-parent communication, we're doing our social media blast, Facebook Up and Live. We have our Smore weekly newsletters and then our community liaison is phenomenal. She will take the newsletter, I'll send it to her in a Word document, she'll put it into the English. And I know Smore does it, but she wants it for the dialect of our community and then I send out a Spanish version on Monday each day. So, that is just some of the action steps that we have to close. One of the things that, when I became the principal of Carver Elementary, was coming up with the motto of one team. So, all of our staff have a T-shirt, you know, with the Carver logo and on the back it has the huge paw of the one team because we are one team. And if we don't stop and build that trust with each other, we're not going to get anywhere. So, we've done a lot of those deliberate relationship-building activities. We've put them into situations that, they came to me, I was uncomfortable sitting in a circle in a staff meeting because they had to make eye contact with someone that they weren't comfortable with. But then, I know we're doing the right things. So, when they go into meetings, they don't know where they're going to sit. It's going to be, you know, just different strategies, strategies like that. And at the beginning, when we first started school, we took the time with half of our staff being new, everybody took the time to introduce themselves. Everybody took that to learn something new about each other and I feel that we are on a great path and I know that we can be a performance school next year with these steps and this plan in place.
Thank you. Superintendent Gall, do you have anything more to add?
No, I really appreciate the energy, particularly at nine o'clock at night.
Right.
No, really, I'm sleeping at this time. I'm just going to say.
It's a lot sooner than what it was a couple of weeks back. I think we had this at ten-thirty, eleven at night, or ten at least. So, it's, we are getting there. So, board members, thoughts and questions? I'll start by saying, maybe you can share a little bit about your background. You said you're a new principal coming into the school. You were not in District 11 before, were you? Like you were coming from outside the district?
Yes. So, I was in the military for ten years and then I became a teacher. I went through CSU Pueblo and I was in School District 8. So, I was in School District 8, I think, for three years and then we transferred to San Antonio where I was in Northside School District, one hundred thousand students, very large. I was still a fifth-grade teacher there, but I became my principal certification and license. I came back, I went back to District 8. I taught in elementary and middle school and then I was the assistant principal at Patriot Elementary in Fort Carson for the last four years.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for providing some context on that. It's always a difficult challenge when you, as a first-year principal, are saddled with these type of, you know, when you are looking at it and you say the five essentials scores and it's all red and, but you are not running away from the challenge. You seem like you're accepting it. It's kind of similar to what Superintendent Gall is walking into. He's walking into schools, which have seventeen of them, a priority improvement, a turnaround. But he accepts that that is a challenge that he's faced with and we got to improve it. And I appreciate that you are accepting that challenge, that this is what it is and you got to move on from there. Board members, comments? And Director Nelson had a comment too. So, do you want... And Director Nelson had a comment too. So do you want to go first, Director Loma?
I'm going to echo what Mr. Gall said, that I appreciate the energy because your job requires energy. It does. It does. And so I'm looking forward to seeing you in improvement, performance. I'm believing for both of you. And I pray all the time and believe me, I pray for our kids. And you guys are vital to that. And I think they're in good hands. So thank you both for, and I'll see you Darren. Thank you guys for all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Director Rock?
Thank you. In your root cause, you mentioned the teacher turnover, but also attendance and behavior challenges. And I wondered if you think what you have for your strategies will impact those as well? Or if you have additional things you're slotting in to address those issues?
I can tell you our attendance right now has even gone down a little bit more. Our percentage, our daily attendance, I think, was at like 86% for this week, 88% it was last week. So one of the things we were kind of throwing out is how we can get the families in and the importance of attendance, but also having them there safely and healthy. So I think that's something that the counselor and I are working at with our staff assistant of how we can, not necessarily incentivize, because that's the hard thing with families. Do I send my child to school when they're sick for that perfect attendance? Or do I make that call as a parent? So I think we're, I probably take it to our building leadership team and really have a discussion of how we can recognize that attendance. We have increased in enrollment. I think we're at 213 students. So that is kind of steadily, we're getting, we have three new students starting on Monday. So I think that's good to have that. And then with behavior, behavior's a challenge. I will say that. Behavior is a challenge in our building. And we had a lot of turnover in staff. I know Random Acts of Kindness is contributing, but some of the student behavior I've never seen before. So we have recruited from district. We have Melissa Tucker as a behavior specialist. And she's coming in and she's working with us actually quite a bit and giving us so that we can do some of those MTSS plans for behavior, giving us different out-of-the-box ideas. So that's just something that we're working on.
Thank you. I know you're not alone with behavior that's
Oh, I agree.
district-wide probably and nationwide even.
Yes.
So I appreciate that you are going to address that head-on. And second question, the Climate and Culture Committee, can you just, there's so much information.
It is, yes.
Yes. And I love that you now have a SAC and the PTA is active still. And I was really sorry, by the way, to miss your Fall Festival. That was the same, as Director Daniels mentioned earlier, the Colorado Association of School Warriors had their Fall Conference that day. So off we went. So that engagement with that committee, what were the steps to include parents on that for Climate and Culture?
So with the Climate and Culture, we're able to take representatives from the Climate and Culture. They are part of our PTA. So they're involving parents there. Our ELL teacher, again, she's on that committee. So she's taking those ideas that we have. And she's part with the Home and Community Partnership too. So honestly, I would say the Climate and Culture, if we want to talk about involving families, I would do our Climate, I'm sorry, our Home and Community Partnership Team. So that's our PTA. That's our SAC. That's getting the parent buy-in. And I think from the Carver Cafe, we asked those questions about what the families value. And we were able to get responses from, they want opportunities for their girls in science or their girls in math. You know, we have a gardening club that we've added. We have a random, or a kindness club in the morning. So we're trying to meet the needs of bringing our families in. We are 44% Hispanic population, so really just having them that they feel comfortable. Our community liaison is in front of the building before school and after school for any family members that need translation. Again, our counselor speaks Spanish. And with our ELL teacher, we're able to have that so that they feel comfortable coming in the buildings. I have the percentages of the families that have come in. So if we look, she, some of their, some of her feedback were, they want to get to know the environment in the classroom in which their child is studying, to see all the kids participating and feeling comfortable. The teacher teaches them very well and that everything looks good. But some of the statistics that she has, she was very, very helpful. Ms. Gabby Escobar is, so her log is she has, we have 29 ELL students in our building. Eight out of 12 of our kindergarten, first-grade parents visited our classroom.
Oh, nice.
And some of them, we have dual parents and some of them are scheduled to come back weekly. So just bringing that in, I think, is building some of that. And then the other opportunities, some of our, from our World Cafe, what do we like about Carver? Because the teachers are kind to our children. The children has learned a lot and the teachers communicate very well with me. In the future, how would you like to see Carver? More support for Spanish-speaking parents, English classes in the evening, more activities before school, morning homework room for our parents that are unable to speak the language and to help those parents going to work very early. And then it just talks about, they want topics like banking, immigration, health topics, domestic violence, children, child behaviors and development, child abuse and neglect. These are what our families are saying. So we're taking this to our Home and Community Partnership Team and how we can provide those opportunities for them.
Okay. I know President Malpackham spoke earlier about the Parent Academy at Coronado and that sounds like a great opportunity for you to address those issues there. Thank you so much. And I know I saw, I can't find it now on your website, at one point, I think the PTA newsletter or something?
We had PTA notes, yes.
Okay.
And then it has like all the PTA meetings for the year.
Yes. I think I saw that in some of the other many activities that you all have going on. So I appreciate that you're sharing that with your community. Thank you.
Yes, the website too. Thank you.
And the Smores Weekly Newsletter that I see out there, the Social Media Blast, all the ways that you're communicating with your family. What percentage of your student population is Hispanic?
Forty-four.
Okay. You just blurted that out, so you must have that information. Good to know. Director Daniels?
Hi. Thank you for the energy. I concur. And when it comes to the 44%, right? I know the, the area is probably changing as we're getting a lot of families coming in from Guatemala and all of the other countries that are looking for a safer place to live. And when we have new teachers and we're having to learn all of the different nuances and building trust because that community does not automatically give it to you. You have to earn it. So I appreciate all of the major improvement strategies that's going to assist. And at the same token, with new teachers, having to learn, what can we do to help that, you know, just like really come up? Because it is a huge, huge opportunity. And are you one of our schools that have the afternoon program where it extends the, the, so maybe some of that as well as in the morning?
We have an adventure club that they have before and after school that they can attend, yes.
Yeah. But so all of those things to come in and support that new growth, that new opportunity and, and of course, building the relationship. How many new teachers do we have?
So we had a new kindergarten teacher. We had two first-grade teachers. One was an interventionist in a previous building. The other one is brand-new. We have a new third-grade teacher and we have a third-grade teacher position posted. And then we have two new, well, we hired two new special education teachers. One was brand-new who had student taught in this district. Our other one unfortunately had to resign due to the, his wife's health. But we actually have, I would say HR is picking up a little faster because we were posted, we posted it last week and I have two interviews scheduled for special education teachers tomorrow and then Friday. And then paraprofessionals, we were able to bring in three new staff members, three new Kinder EAs. So we do, we probably, it's at least 50/50. But it's welcoming them all. And then we have the returning. I mean, we, some of our, we have teachers that have been in our building 12, 15, 18 years. Our fourth-grade teachers remained and our fifth-grade teacher remained. And we have a kindergarten teacher that's been there a very long time. And our community liaison, our building manager, and just building relationships with them. You know, we had our Colorado Springs that cleanup day on a Saturday. And so we had students from Dordy that came over and cleaned up. And it was just, you know, the gardening and just doing the area beautification makes a difference. You know, makes a difference. Like they can see the positive in changing the culture when they walk in the building. We interviewed a spent EA, unfortunately she turned us down. But she's like, "I loved your building just when I walked in, the feeling," you know, from a new staff assistant we had also this year. New health tech. Lot of turnover.
Lots of turnover, which is very important for the community to understand that we are in a sweeping new wave of all of those areas because it's a national situation. But at the same token, thank you for the energy because you have all of those areas you have to bring together as a leader. And you're with it. So I'm grateful that your energy is going to be woo-hoo.
This is me at 9:00 PM. You should see me in the morning.
I'm just grateful for that because that's student engagement, parent engagement, community engagement, new staff, new, it's a lot.
It is a lot.
It is a lot. And I am looking forward to supporting you on whatever it is you need so that it does bond, collaborate. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Everybody has commented about your energy. So Director Nelson, you had a question? Or comment? Are you there?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I had, I had the same question as Director Odd about noticing the behavior challenges in one of the takeaways but not seeing an action item on it. So thanks for that explanation. I'll just jump then to more general comments for both schools tonight that, you know, of course, taking into account the DAC feedback. I watched the accreditation meeting again and they had a lot of good information and questions, feedback to give you guys in that, so I won't repeat it. My second thought, I, this is also kind of more in general, not specific to Carver. I have noticed a couple of the schools use both Capturing Kids' Hearts and Random Acts of Kindness. And perhaps that makes a lot of sense for that school, but I just find it interesting that they're using both programs. And when there's only so much time and energy in the day, I, just as a district, you know, big picture, maybe we consider, does it make sense to have schools utilizing both programs? Or is it putting too much on a teacher's plate? And is that something that could help to focus on the academics a little bit more if we have them narrowed down to only one program? So I don't know the answer if that makes sense or not, but just something for us to consider going forward. But thanks so much for presenting tonight. And you already answered my questions that I had specifically for you. So thanks.
Do you have both those programs?
We have Random Acts of Kindness, so that's a free social-emotional curriculum for everyone. I have used Capturing Kids' Heart and that has like the explorer model so that everything that they're learning in that can be applied to curriculum also. So it's not just socially-emotional. It's your strategies, your launch, and it's how they're teaching. So it kind of builds on them. I've also had experience with, you know, Boys Town as a social-emotional curriculum. And in my previous school, we did responsive classroom. I don't think we can get too much of that socially-emotional learning and building those relationships. I think the teachers just have that urgency of relationships and academic instruction. So you have to make it a primary. So whatever program you have, you adopt, you just have to do it very, very well.
Thank you. And I like the word that you used, there is a sense of urgency. So, and I hope that resonates with not only you, but also the Fremont principal, that we are, there is a sense of urgency to turn this around at this time. Any other questions at this time? One question I had for you, go ahead.
Sorry, I'll just clarify. I believe it was Fremont that mentioned they had both programs. So I apologize for the confusion there.
Okay. So that's a feedback that you received from a director that maybe the focus should be, take a limited amount of programs as opposed to spreading yourself then at this point in time. Couple of questions for you. Since you are a new principal coming in and you are coming into the District 11 system, have you had the training and the coaching that you need? And you're a first-year principal. It seems like you've seamlessly jumped into that role, but we want to make sure that you get the support you need to grow into this.
Yes, I've had more than enough training. I think they started with the Principal Boot Camp, I think, was great. We have the coaching that Bryant, I'm sorry, I can't even think of it. Brandon set up. So they have the coaching, so I can meet with a coach. And I meet with a coach on Saturday mornings at 8:00 AM. I mean, so that I can talk about and get ideas that way.
Did you say Saturday mornings at 8:00?
Saturday mornings at 8:00 AM, every other Saturday. So I can get coaching and she gives me different ideas that I can bring back to my staff. I meet with Darren biweekly, you know, run things by him. You prepare us with, we have a principal meeting every month. We have an elementary principal meeting every month. And then now we have the McCrell Training coming up, which is more leadership training. So more than enough training, more than enough support. Now that I'm three months in actually with the students, I feel like I can absorb a lot of that more and understand all of the acronyms and everything else too. So yes, you guys are preparing your student, our principals for success.
Okay, that's good to hear. Seeing no further thoughts or questions, and we provided some feedback to you, for you and the principal, Ms. Principal Squires up there too. So just to wrap it up to the board and to get some board feedback on the process that we talked about. We saw the presentation slides, but we did not see the actual USIPS. Now, based on the feedback that we provided, they are going to go and work on the USIPS. And this is going to, at some point in time, come back to the board, which is going to be in December. And I know that in December, we are going to have a whole bunch of schools that the board is going to get at the same time, so we would appreciate it. And I would take the board feedback on this too, that we get this in a timely manner and we don't get it like two days before or whatever it is. Do we get that even?
We'll provide them in tranches.
Right, thank you.
We'll try and grab four at a time within three weeks after their presentation to make sure that you all have time to review the USIPs.
Time to review it and so we can provide some feedback on this.
David, can you take that for action for us? Thank you, to build that schedule of USIP supply post-board presentation.
Okay. Any other feedback for?
I just had a closing comment. I just want to acknowledge interim superintendent Nick Gledich and the hard work that he did in preparing my team to have very strong leaders in place at Carver. So, you know, this just didn't happen overnight. And so this idea of taking that time period after the movement of the board from the previous superintendent in the interim time period to fill as many principalships as possible and to be able to do that with the robust nature of finding folks outside of the district as well as raising up some of the strong leaders inside the district. It wasn't a plug-and-play. I really appreciate the work that both Nick and Mary, in concert with the board, did last year. This is an acknowledgement of that. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. And that is good feedback to have. And I have time and again said from this seat up here, principals are the most integral part in, you guys play the most pivotal part, more than even the superintendent, because you guys can make or break a building very quickly. I have seen that in my time, that you put a good principal in there, they're able to effectively turn the school building around right away. And if you put inefficient principal in there, then the damage that they cause takes years to correct. So I'm glad that you guys came and presented this and you accepted some of the challenges that you are facing and you are progressing in the right direction. And with the support that we are providing, the wraparound services and the leaning from the central administration leaning into you, I'm looking forward to hearing good things from both Fremont and Carver.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, future agenda items, requests, request for new?
I think you need to second the motion.
Oh, yes. Okay. We got to make a motion to table these school improvement plans until December 14th, 2022. So could I have a motion?
Turn white.
Thank you. Item E2, Unified Improvement Plans for Fremont Elementary and Carver Elementary until the regular board meeting of December 14th, 2022.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call please, Marissa.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Rock?
Aye.
The ayes have it, so we will see you back when this comes as an action item on December 14th. Now, moving on to future agenda item requests. If you can turn it off. Yep, thank you. Future agenda items, requests from board members. Do I see anything? I don't see anything here. Director Nelson, do you have any?
Yes, I would like to better understand the recent survey given to some of our students, the Panorama Survey, if we could get information from that department to just know what, what the purpose is and perhaps have the board review our policy on surveys and informing parents on them taking place. And I'll just share a personal story that my daughter told me, she took the survey and that it asked questions about, you know, is she nice to her teacher? And then also, when she's at home, does she get into fights with her siblings? And I don't know about you all, but of course, people, all kids get in fights with siblings, but, so I found that question a little funny. I just wonder what the purpose is of why we're asking our students these questions and as a parent, I didn't know that she was going to be receiving it. So I would, I would just like some clarity on that. And then circling back on the Healthy Kids Survey that was given to our students last fall, you know, it was right around the time that the new board took place and that survey had a lot of also very personal questions in it. And we never did circle back on the data and what we learned from it and why we decided to go ahead and pursue giving it and just would like to have that follow-up conversation at some point and for the board to discuss whether we want to pursue it in the future. It's given every two years and by the state, Colorado Department of Public Health, and so we just need to discuss whether we want District 11 to participate next year or not. So, yeah, talk about surveys. And then my other question for, hold on, sorry, I'm reviewing my notes really quick. Oh, just, I don't know if this is a future agenda item, but for next year, for us to think about, hopefully we don't have any schools on turnaround or priority improvement, but can we possibly look at the timeline of getting the information to the DAC well before it comes to the board so that the schools and the teams have time to incorporate the feedback they get from the DAC before it then comes to the board? I just feel like sometimes we're repeating information they've already heard and they could just update it and then we see kind of the final, that would, just some food for thought there, that we look at the timeline in the future of how we want to handle these. Hopefully we don't even have to do them, but if we do, thinking about that. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Director Nelson. I'll start with the second one first, when you are asking for the timeline. Usually, and Dr. Kalaki can correct me if I'm wrong on that, usually the timeline for us to approve the school improvement plans is sometime in October and this has to be submitted to CDE by October fifteenth is usually for all the priority improvement and turnaround Like Mitchell and Galileo, when did we have to turn that in for Mitchell, Galileo, West and Midland?
With this year priority turnaround, priority improvement turnaround. They moved it out to January.
No, but for, but for those schools that were already on the plan like West and Midland, I thought they were, they had to be turned in earlier.
Uh, no, they can, they moved them all.
Even those, we approved them in September, tho- those plans. And I thought the idea was that those schools, because they are already on priority improvement or turnaround, third or fourth year, that those plans had to be turned in by October fifteenth.
I will double check, but I think they batched them all into January, but I'll, I'll close out.
I thought the new schools are the only ones that we'd done and you may want to check that. But where I was getting to with Director Nelson's question was that most generally we need to turn in all these to CDE by October fifteenth.
In a normal year, that's right.
Yeah, in a normal year. And so to provide all this information to the DAC and we could be dealing with fifteen schools next year and we have to get this all done by October fifteenth to present it. At least now we have a little bit lengthier timeframe, so that's a good ask. I don't know how realistic it is when DAC doesn't start meeting till end of August and we have to get this all into the board by end of September so that it can be submitted to CDE. But if it's possible, but going back to Lauren's request, if it is possible to get this to the DAC in a timely fashion.
We'll work out that schedule for you.
Thank you. And then the first request was about the surveys. Superintendent Gall, do you have anything to add onto that request?
I have no comment, I'll be at the board.
Okay. Is this, and in the past, we've had the Panorama Survey results and Healthy Kids Survey results. Those survey results were shared with the board at a work session, so we can possibly look into, looking at that results at the work session and then get collective board guidance on that. But is that something that the board would look at to, look to see the results of that Panorama and Healthy Kids Survey as a future board work session discussion? Could I, thumbs up on that? Oh, you want to, you had a?
Just wanted to make a comment that CASB did have some presentations, that's the word, about the Healthy Kids Survey. So there is a way to get those presenters to provide more information as to why that does exist, if we ever go deeper into that.
Perfect. And I'm assuming that our counseling department would also be able to provide those answers for us, but if we need to reach out to CASB, we can reach out too.
Right.
But what I'm talking about right now is just to look at the results of the survey and then we can look at the benefits of the survey or what are the pros and cons for what Director Nelson is talking about. Are we?
Only if we have people there that can truly answer the questions.
I'm assuming, yeah, absolutely.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely. Okay, so do we want to, are we good with that, thumbs up? Director Ott, is your comment on this too? Okay, go ahead.
To Director Nelson's comments and Director Daniels, it sounds like she is interested in more than just the results. And I will give a thumbs up for learning about the results, but also learning about the context of the surveys, the why, as she specifically requested for Panorama, but also for the Healthy Kids for Colorado and what, how the community uses that as well as our own district. Thank you.
Perfect. Which is what I have a thumbs up on, the context of the whole surveys, why it's being given, having somebody that is an expert on that subject matter come and talk to us and also look at the results of the survey from the past year or so. This hasn't come in front of the board, so I will work with Superintendent Gall in scheduling a future work session on this topic. We do have the rest of the year pretty much booked up with things that are coming in front of the board and I will provide a summary on that, so maybe this is something that we can wait on till December or early January to schedule this work session. Director Nelson, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Director Daniels?
I would love to get more clarity on the collaboration. I heard it mentioned earlier, taking advantage of having our students move out a little bit more to get to the things they really want to do. And briefly, would just like to know how can we make that happen sooner than later? I know we talked about it earlier, but I would love to hear more of that.
Like are you talking about students moving into workforce or like?
A little bit of everything. How can we get to a common schedule that works with moving fluidly?
Yeah, we'd like to bring a CTE update to the board.
Perfect. And I was going to make that request too, so if we can tie in that conversation, what is the vision plan, your future plan for CTE and even looking at some matriculation data for our district, how many of them are going into post-secondary college or directly into workforce? Yeah, some of those data, if we can all tie it into, and I'm looking forward to having that conversation with Dr. Mendelsburg. And we will schedule that, thumbs up on that too? Good. We will again schedule that as soon as we can, but probably some of this conversation is going to be till, going to be in January, beginning of the year. So looking at the calendar review, we have a work session that's scheduled on November second and talking to Superintendent Gall, he is going to come and talk to us. I think we are going to have three more schools that are going to come to that work session to present, is it three?
That's correct.
Yeah, so we are going to have three more schools that are going to come and make this, the, since we have seventeen schools, we are going to have three schools that are going to come to that work session next week and we are going to have the same conversation at the work session next week. And then when they come as a non-action, the following week, we won't have that discussion, we will just move them quickly to the action item. But we have three schools that are going to come and talk to us and also Superintendent Gall is going to talk to us about some organizational alignment, realignment at that work session. And then we have a board meeting on November nineteenth, November ninth. And on the work session on November sixteenth, we are going to have charter school discussions. We have a charter school application in front of us, Independence Hall, and that charter school application is being reviewed by the DAC and we will get the DAC input and we will also hear from the charter school and that application process and provide some board feedback at that work session. We also have existing charter school, one or two, that are going to, have shown interest and have submitted an application to, to be in the portfolio umbrella of District 11 School. So we will talk about all those charter schools on November sixteenth and then we may have to have a special meeting on November thirtieth. That would be a board meeting since we won't have a meeting the Thanksgiving week and that would be the charter school discussion again, putting that as a non-action item on the board agenda. I'm not sure if there is anything else, but I will get back to you. But keep that November thirtieth, tentatively, we are going to have that fifth Wednesday, a board meeting on that day. Director Ott?
Thank you. I wonder if Superintendent Gall would address the event on November first for the town hall with you?
Okay.
As well.
Yeah, six to seven o'clock, Coronado in the cafeteria. We'll be starting the first of four superintendent-led town halls in our four clustered high school regions. The fifth has been reserved for the board to hold at their will. We'll be covering basic budgeting strategies as we go into the year, do a little bit of overview of some of the work that we've done, talk about decreasing enrollment averaging, but really just trying to understand what we believe the needs of the community are as we build, as we prepare to build the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And then we'll also open it up just for general Q and A. We want to really make sure that we're showing ourselves as an engaging administration and connecting and hearing the needs of the community. And I thank Brandon for volunteering first to be out there at Coronado. So looking forward to that opportunity.
Okay, thank you for that reminder, Director Ott, and that also reminds me to provide that feedback to the board. I requested April thirteenth, they had set aside five dates out there for the town hall meeting. I requested the last one, April thirteenth, for the board town hall. So I'm not sure what day it is, it's not a Wednesday, it's either a Tuesday or a Thursday. April thirteenth, I don't know the location yet, but it'll be from six to seven or six to seven-thirty. By that time, the board would also have made the decision about Superintendent Gall's contract and so we would, it would be a good opportunity for the board to communicate that with the community at that time on April thirteenth. The other four town halls are not necessarily mandated, required that board members attend, but if you are free, you are more than welcome to attend and it's more for Superintendent Gall and his leadership team to provide that support. And answer questions from the public, so. May I have a motion adjourned?
Move and seconded, roll call please, Marissa.
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. We have adjourned at nine forty-one PM.
To just thank you.